What's that fuck? And I like pictures. That was about political. But that's a lot of stuff.
Good evening. The Methuen School Committee Business Session of September 8th, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member DeZoglio? Member Donovan?
Present.
For Keegan?
Present.
Member Maxwell?
Present.
Member Shabelia?
Here.
Member Willett?
Here.
Mayor Beauregard?
Here. We need a motion in a second to accept the agenda for tonight's meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Before we proceed to a vote, I'm going to request a motion in a second to amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to add busing to business from the committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair to amend the agenda to add the busing update. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion in a second to accept the agenda as amended for tonight's meeting.
So moved again.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Vice Chair Keegan. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Will now rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on the agenda, we're going to have, before public participation, we're going to have two different presentations. First will be a discussion regarding the exciting new Methuen Literacy Partnership.
I'm going to invite some folks up, I think. Come on up.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, friends. I'm Krista MacLeod, the Director of the Nevins Library. I'm honored to share this pivotal moment for Methuen, a moment we've been building towards with care and intention. For many years, the Nevins Library has been building a robust program of services to bring reading and, of course, culture to people of all ages in Methuen. And we have partnered with many diverse local organizations, including, of course, the Methuen Public Schools, to achieve our goals. In 2006, the library founded Literacy Volunteers of Methuen to support adults who needed tutoring in basic literacy and English as a second or other language. The library is also currently engaged in an initiative to educate new parents about the importance of building pre-literacy and early reading skills in the very youngest of our children. About two years ago, former Principal Mary Beth Donovan Grassy, Representative Ryan Hamilton and I began to talk very intentionally about how we could make a larger impact on reading proficiency rates among the children of our community and how that was linked with family and adult literacy. What resources and people needed to be engaged to raise the level of urgency and commitment to literacy in Methuen. Mayor DJ Beauregard immediately recognized the opportunity to support a grassroots efforts, effort to invest the energy of our residents into our city's future. Since then, we have been trying to envision how the whole community can unite around the goal of ensuring every child in Methuen has the foundational reading skills needed for lifelong success. One of our early partners in bringing this vision to life has been Dr. Jessica Callen. From the beginning, Dr. Callen has offered guidance, insight, and collaborative leadership as we mapped out what a citywide campaign for grade-level reading could look like right here in Methuen and how we could support the great efforts of the Methuen Public Schools. It is with excitement that I get to introduce the Methuen Literacy Partnership along with Dr. Jessica Callen. She will serve as our campaign lead and consultant under the library, bringing expertise in social impact strategy, grade-level reading campaign work, and the proven collective impact model to help Methuen launch, grow, and deliver on an ambitious undertaking. Jessica, we want to thank you for guiding us through this journey and for officially leading our efforts as we kick off the Methuen Literacy Partnership this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for having us, everyone. My name is Jessica Callen. I'm very excited to be here and to officially get to present this partnership and this collaborative initiative that involves so many of us. So I think that we all know that literacy is important, and so I will just briefly touch on why we're here. We're here because Methuen faces an urgent challenge. This is not unique to Methuen, but we are seeing this across the nation. Right now, over half of first and second graders in Methuen and forty percent of Methuen third graders are reading below grade level. So if you think of that, that's five out of ten kids. That's a very significant amount. These aren't just numbers. They're children across every neighborhood whose opportunities and growth are shaped by whether or not they become strong readers. We know that research tells us that being able to read proficiently by third grade is one of the greatest indicators of success later on in life. And so it's predicting not just high school graduation, health, civic engagement, and career readiness. We know that when literacy rises, so does the health and prosperity of an entire city. So that's what we're launching. Under the leadership of the Nevins Library and in partnership with the Mayor's Office, Representative Hamilton, and many, many more, we are excited to announce the launch of this partnership, a citywide campaign to improve early literacy outcomes. Now, this is modeled after successful efforts in other communities and in conversations to be part of the National Campaign for Grade-Level Reading, so we are on the map and connected with many resources across the nation. This is built over years of planning, and the campaign will bring together families, schools, city government, volunteers, and organizations to work towards a single, bold goal, that every Methuen child is reading proficiency by the end of third grade. So how will we do this? So this is a community-driven discovery. We're not going to come in here and say, "Here are all programs that work for all kids," because we don't know what works for Methuen kids. So for the next several months, what I will be doing, myself and with our campaign assistant, Jessie McGee, we will be conducting listening sessions, stakeholder mapping, and needs assessments to ensure that Methuen's literacy strategy is shaped by the real experiences of children, parents, and educators across the city. This is creating a community solutions action plan that is tailored to what we are seeing, what we need, and what we can access. Not only that, but there is an equity-focused and evidence-based lens that we are implementing. Our approach is aligning with evidence-based programs across the world. Family engagement, which we know is twice as predictive of student success than race, socioeconomic status, or ethnicity. We also want to ensure that there is access to books to build home libraries and community activities with a clear focus on ensuring that all children, regardless of background, receive the support that they need to succeed. So this is a collaborative leadership. This is Methuen's campaign. This is a city campaign. It's rooted in partnership and shared action. So our first big invitation that we have for everyone is to join us at the Nevins Library Book Sale. This will be September 27th. We will be there from 11 until 1:00. And we encourage everyone to come meet the team, to learn about the partnership, to learn about the mission, and share your story as the campaign takes shape. You can find more information about the partnership, about the work that we're doing, and all the updates along the way at our website, methuandreads.org. So last, and I will be brief. I really appreciate the time and know that you have more on the agenda. But this is essentially a call to action. This work cannot and absolutely will not be accomplished by just schools alone. This is wherever families show up. This is all of our responsibility. So to truly transform literacy, we invite the full community, which is families, civic groups, local businesses, faith-based partners, and all residents. Please come out, please get involved, volunteer, advocate, and help us make Methuen a city where every child's future is wide open, because every child should be able to read. So again, thank you for your support and partnership. We are so excited to begin this work and create a lasting partnership with Methuen Public Schools. We know that we're stronger together, and together, really, we can ensure that every child in Methuen thrives through the power of reading. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I want to reiterate that shout-out from earlier. Recognized Member Donovan, Representative Ryan Hamilton, Director MacLeod, Dr. Quong, and you, Jessica, and your team. We're so glad you're here and we're thrilled just to consider what will happen over the course of this program in terms of literacy growth in our city. It's truly wonderful, so thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments to share? Member Maxwell and Member Shabelia?
I just have one question. Is this just for early literacy, like K through three, or is this beyond as well?
That's a great question. So we are modeling at this beginning stage, looking at third-grade reading as that indicator, because that nationally recognizes one of those pivot points. But that has not been clearly defined, because that's part of our mapping and our stakeholder investment, is learning what that pivot point really looks like in Methuen. Because while statistics can show those indicators or that pin where we see student achievement change, where you're learning to read or reading to learn, right? We also want to ensure that we're looking very intentionally at our mission and our scope aligning with what Methuen needs. So right now, that is our kind of framework as we're gathering information, but we are still in the discovery phase of what will be specific to the students here.
I love this. I think this is great, so thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Member Donovan. This is a great opportunity for our kids.
Member Shabelia?
So what do you need from us? How do we help? I mean, other than spreading the word about September 27th at the library for the book sale, how do we, as, I don't know, elected officials or individuals or the school, how do we help make this successful?
That is a great question. I think one of the things is to keep an eye out. We will be reaching out, because we are looking to host some community dialogue series. We're trying to have a different method of incorporating questions and formal and informal feedback loops, so it won't just be in person or online, but we have multiple ways of reaching families. So please encourage those participations. Please show up when you can. I think it goes a long way to show that there's investment from those who are in positions like yours, participating and bringing people along, because we need everyone's voices. And I think that one of these early discovery phases will be identifying where families truly are showing up, because this isn't just school or early literacy or family-focused. But families also show up in different capacities. So we know that there's laundromats or apartment buildings. We know that employers, healthcare. So there's a lot of businesses, and we just encourage you at this stage to participate to make sure that the outreach is going out to everyone where families are existing in Methuen, so we can gather as much information to then build out programs that are specific to the needs of the students here.
Awesome. Yeah, no, anything we can do or I can do, I mean, Representative Hamilton knows how to find, well, all of us. So this is fantastic, and I know it's been successful in other places, and I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Willett?
Thank you. Is there a capacity to make donations of children's books at the library? For instance, if some family members that have outgrown those books, but in turn they want to donate those books to the library that you can match up with families in need, is there a mechanism for that? And also, if someone wanted to donate outright to your, is there a nonprofit status that someone can make a donation? Those will be the two things, because I know people, if they're listening tonight, or if the Tribune publishes an article on this, if people in their inventory of books, you know, wanted to make a donation or alignment of donated books to families in need, is there a mechanism for that? And also, if someone wanted to make a donation outright, is there a mechanism for that?
That's a great question. So I appreciate that, because we know that everyone who is interested might not have the time or capacity, and so it's always very great to encompass other ways to get involved and show support. At this time, we are gathering how that will look and doing that process and administration. The way to get involved and show interest in being on that list to know how donations will work in those physical books and how that dispersment will go is on the website. So again, methuandreads.org. There's a Get Involved page and a Contact Us page. And then we will be working and operating under the Nevins Library, and so that information of donation, I believe, will be organized. We'll have a Donate tab on that website once it's established. You are getting the very, very early version of this, because we just launched in September, so thank you. You're setting us up for success, and I really appreciate it.
Member Donovan, part of the Brain Trust. Anything to add?
Well, I want to thank Jessica. The day after I retired from the Tenny, I think, is the day we met virtually, because I was so impressed at what I saw in April. I volunteered at an event, and I saw about fifty people from various walks of life who have really, who really purposefully and with meaning adopted a third grade, it was a third grade?
Yes.
Across the schools and communicated with them and read books together. And I thought, wouldn't it be great if this, we could agree that teaching reading should not be the sole responsibility of our schools? We place such a heavy burden on our teachers and so much about literacy we should share responsibility for, because we know, and Jessica alluded to it, communities that have literate citizens are wealthier, have more work opportunities, have more civic engagement, and are healthier. And I think this is one of the topics that we can't argue about. We can't say it's too left, it's too right, it's right down the middle for what we need. So two years later, thanks to Jess for sticking with us and Krista for sticking with me. And Mr. Hamilton, where are you? For really pushing us when we were about to give up, because it was a long process for something so important. And then, of course, to get the funding to the Nevins. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that very much. So, big night, big night in Methuen. So let's see where this heads.
Absolutely. Again, as I mentioned before, we're so glad you're here. So thank you very much.
Yes, I think that this is one of the many levers in a long-term poverty prevention mechanism in the city, and so I'm excited to see where we can take it and just happy to be a part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Superintendent, I'll invite you to begin the discussion regarding the Methuen Youth Center.
So I just wanted this, tonight, to be an opportunity to have the new Executive Director, Kelly Ford, to come on up and introduce herself, have a check-in, to share with all of you that, on a weekly basis at this point, I am meeting with the folks at the youth center, and Kelly, that was a few weeks ago, I think, we met for the first time. And just thought this would be a good idea to share with you the progress of the building and where we are and meet Kelly in person. So that's what we invited her to do tonight.
Thank you. Teamwork. All right. Good evening. I'm Kelly Ford. Super excited to be here. Just wanted to share a little bit about myself and then get into, you know, what we're doing here and how we're moving this forward. So I'm the new founding Executive Director of the Methuen Community Youth Center. A little bit about my background. I have over twenty years' experience working in early childhood education and in youth development. I am from New Jersey, and I moved to Massachusetts in 2019. And I thought I was going to explore in 2020, and as we're all aware, all the things that happened. And however, it created a challenging environment, but it also strengthened my resolve to serve the community even more. So I have a few degrees with a focus, one in early ed, psychologies, and a master's in executive leadership. And so I'm incredibly passionate about the work that I do and how I lead in communities and serve and build strong partnerships. And I believe that helping young people build a strong network of supportive adults in communities, we can help them find their tribe and ultimately become the best versions of themselves. So our program is to provide a safe space for youth to grow and to thrive, and I want to give a special thanks to the vision from Susan Ledger-Ferraro and the tireless hard work of State Auditor Diana DeZoglio. And this incredible dream has become a reality. I joined the team at the end of July, and I'm so excited to be such a part of an amazing opportunity to serve and to give back to our young youth and our community. So we have already established a youth advisory board, which we call My Voice, and the kids have been coming in, and they definitely have a voice, and they will tell you. So this group is composed of eighth through twelfth graders who have a seat at the table and are helping to lead the direction of our organization. I also want to take a moment to thank the My Voice members who consistently show up and share their support and aren't afraid to bring their powerful ideas to the table. Their leadership is invaluable. And to highlight a few of our initial pilot programs and partnerships, we have hosted a media workshop with Methuen Community Youth Studio and held our pre-launch. We also had our National Night Out and a Community Big Sell. And currently, my focus has been on finalizing our renovations and security for our building. I am excited to meet more of the community members and partners as we continue to build strong relationships within the community. And so I really appreciate the time to be able to come up here and speak to you all and share this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome to Methuen and to the youth center. Do we have any questions, comments from the committee? Do we have any questions, comments from the committee? Member Maxwell and member DeZoglio?
How do you become a My Voice volunteer? Or you said they continuously show up. How do you, how do you show up?
So, the, how do I show up or the kids?
The eighth through 10th?
Eighth graders? So actually, the kids have been recruiting each other and telling their friends about what's happening at the My Voice. And really, it's just like, what are you passionate about? What is it that you want to give back and to share for your community? And a lot of the feedback that I received from the kids, because I did ask them, like, what made you interested in this? And they said, I want to be able to bring things to our community that we don't have in the schools, or want to bring a new idea and share it with that. And so that openness and that willingness to have them be able to come into the space, but also to partner alongside with the schools and other community partners, to be able to push that work forward. And what that looked like when they came up, they designed their rooms of what they wanted to do. We have an international room where they're learning how to speak Turkish, Spanish, and they designed that. And so in terms of like, what does it look like to join? It's really just simple, like, what's your interest in? How can you bring your full self into the space?
But I guess, my question is, is how do you join? How do, if I'm an eighth grader and I, this sounds so interesting to me, how do I find you?
Sorry. So basically, you would come in and meet me currently, right now, so as we're still continuing to build out this program, eventually having a program director at some point in the future, but they come in, and then we just have the conversation and assessment, and then that's how they, they lead into it. But it's also going back into explain like what the commitments are for this.
Where do they come in, though? Where do they meet you?
They can come over to tend it in place.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, that's a good question. So I'm very new to this, not as an executive, but I used to be the executive of the Boys and Girls Club. And so this is my second role, but this is a little different. So I definitely appreciate it.
Thank you. I was just wondering, how many kids do we currently have coming to the youth center right now? Like, how many members, et cetera?
So currently, since we don't have our building inspection, and right now my focus has been on like the security access for the doors, we don't have members coming in at the moment. We do have our My Voice, which we meet bi-weekly, some online, just to keep that momentum going. But that's currently what's happening. So around now, we have about 15 of those kids who are on that.
And I think if I could share, to piggyback off of that question, I didn't say this in the beginning, but I will. So the hope, you know, when we did this in the fall of 2024, our hope was within a year that we would actually have programming in the building with all of the renovations. And our target at this point is still January. So, the, the biggest, I think Kelly has said it three times already, but we're really trying to focus on the security right now with the team, what actually will work in the building best we can to make sure that the kids are secure in the second floor and the gym and the kitchen area and the entryway, right? Because there's other people now with the adult ed and DPW. So, they have been wonderful. I have done several walkthroughs with Michael at this point, and Bruce, and different engineers to make sure that they aren't changing the building, but actually adding to it to make it better. So, we're working through all that right now. Doesn't happen overnight, as we're all learning. Takes a long time to get certain kind of doors, and that building is unique. So to do the work, right, is a unique set of, you know, stuff, right? It's a different set of doors that you need, and we want to preserve the windows inside and things like that. So we're working really hard to do that, which I appreciate the partnership of how this is supposed to be going, so.
Member Shabelia?
You mentioned that you don't have the, the building permit yet? Not the building permit, the occupancy permit, I assume, is what it is? Is that, sorry, what?
Inspection.
Inspections. Is that all pending the stuff that you just, Dr. Quang just mentioned? Or is there other things associated with that?
So, that is...
Mostly.
Yeah, that's mostly all the things that we were mentioning. And so like, one of them, for example, is just like getting a door handle to be able to like pull it open. And so it took almost about a week just to get that door handle, just because of the unique building and how old the door is. And so it is, it is a, you know, a big undertaking in terms of like making sure that we're getting it, but that's all the security, and that's one of the things that we did need for our building inspection. And so that part is currently done, which I'm really excited about, and so we're going to ask Bob to come back out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure Bob is loving that.
I know, and this is the, this is the, the challenge, which we knew going into this. We were very open about this conversation, that the needs in the building and what needs to, the things that need to pass are different when you have different age kids in the building.
Right.
So this is what we're, this is the growing pain part of this right now. There are certain things that have to be very different about the bathrooms or different things about just the building setup that we have to make sure. So again, they're working, I think, right before Kelly came on or right when Kelly came on is when we said we would do these weekly Zoom check-ins, so that we wouldn't lose momentum of where we are with the, being the lesor and the lesee, making sure that we had constant communication about what the building needed. You know, we cannot have full programming until all those things are in place. We promised that of the city and the community. They've been really good at making sure that we have been involved in those conversations to oversee that.
So I guess my, my last point, and I, sorry, I saw you go for the button. If, as this continues, if you're not getting, like, we can't speed up oddly shaped door orders, you know what I mean? But if you need anything and you've hit roadblocks, and I know it goes without saying, because Dr. Quang would come to us anyways, but never hesitate to come back to that podium or to send this body an email, because I think one of the few things we all have agreed on over our tenure is getting this thing up and running and moving. So if you hit roadblocks and you need someone to bust through it, use us, because that's, that's what we're here for, because we want this to succeed. And if we can help you in any way, we're here.
Thank you so much. I really do appreciate that.
Any other questions? Vice Chair?
When all the security is in place, is there any envision of a requirement that the people who are working there for the city are going to be required to have a quarry or anything to, for the safety of the kids that are in the building? Is there going, I mean, because I'm going to assume they're going to be using the same door, they're going to be passing each other at least? No? Like, are they going to be completely separate? Like, how is that going to work?
We're trying really hard to make it completely separate. So I think that's, that's been our, when I walked through with Michael, there's a few spaces that are a little tricky, but we're, we're trying to literally divide the building so that somebody from this space can't get down to their space, right? And obviously with all codes, that people can get out when they need to get out. But, again, we're working through a couple of the trickier spaces. The harder part for us right now is the front entrance. The front entrance is common. It's always been common, and that's where the elevator is. So there are certain things that we're not going to be able to, I don't want to say avoid, but there's certain spaces that are just the front doors, the front door to the building. So we're trying to figure out what the best flow and movement and supervision would be of those spaces, and I think those are some things we still have to work out.
Right, and that's, that's my concern, is are we going to require all of the adults that are working in that building to be background checked?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's an us thing. I think that's a conversation potentially for the center and to maybe explore about that, because they're not necessarily going to be with those individuals alone, and they're going to be using completely separate facilities, restrooms, et cetera. So that's something we would have to explore, but I don't know if that's necessarily for us to say everybody, because I mean, I have adult ed in the bottom floor, like, I can't ask everybody who signs up for an adult ed class to have a quarry check, right? So I think it's just, that's a little wonky right now, but I think we can explore that and what means do we have to go to, to do that? Again, to keep everybody safe as the programming, but that would be more of like them exploring what they need to do as a actual youth program and what the requirements are around a youth program. I'd also say that one thing that we discovered, so you might see this come across our agenda maybe by October, is that they have done some much more detailed measurements on the square footage, which is a little bit greater than what we had in the lease. So we're looking at just doing a quick addendum to the lease to make sure that we all understand that they can have access to the square footage that we intended, right? We've said the gym, we've said the kitchen, we've said the classrooms. The square footage was a little off. Now that they've done work and are doing some renovations, we just want to make sure everything is on an up and up. So we're potentially working on that addendum right now, too.
Any other questions? Member Willett?
Yeah, that was the crux of a lot of my questions when we posed questions to the group, and they, something that they're going to work on, and that's an ongoing fluid situation. We'll probably have to get a further report on that, because I think there's going to have to be some type of demarcation line. And also, like, the, the usage into the later evenings, when you have the homes right where the central school is located, and it hasn't been used as a school for decades. So that's another thing, too, the dynamic of homes right in that area in terms of the noise ordinance. But overall, they've been wonderful in communicating. Anytime we've had questions, they've answered the questions. They, again, the open house, which I wasn't able to attend unfortunately, but then you also outreach to me again. So the, the rapport is excellent, and I think that was the biggest thing that the vice chair and I talked about was the quarry check, a demarcation line, a separation of the young children versus anybody else visiting that facility. It's a unique dynamic that probably has to be corrected. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda is public participation. Is there anybody who has signed up? Nobody signed up, but would anybody who is in the audience like to speak? If not, I will close public participation. If you cannot make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to marthasirois@m-a-s-i-r-o-i-s@methuen.k12.m-a.us before 3:00 PM on the day of a school committee meeting. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. First, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 11, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabelia, the second is from the vice chair. Discussion? Not will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 25, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabelia, the second is from the vice chair. Any discussion? A vice chair? Excuse me, member?
Maxwell.
Maxwell?
So I just need to ask for a friendly amendment that I actually spoke with Martha about. So it's during the August 25th meeting, it was my one, topic 1D, administrative job descriptions. It was supposed to read administrative job descriptions and role clarity across the district. And this says administrative job descriptions in clarity across the district. So just and role instead of in.
So it's a motion to amend the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second from member Willett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member Shabelia, the second is from the vice chair. Also, forgive me for anyone who is watching, I'm just getting over a man cold, as they are called, and my brain may not be functioning as well as it should. Any other discussion? If not, we will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the superintendent evaluation subcommittee minutes of August 7, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from member DeZoglio, second is from the vice chair. Discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes of August 12, 2025.
So moved.
Motion is from member Shabelia, second is from member DeZoglio. Any discussion? There's no discussion. We'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes from August 20, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from the vice chair, seconds from member DeZoglio. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Lastly, we need a motion and a second to approve the policy subcommittee minutes of August 26, 2025.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion from the vice chair, seconds from member DeZoglio. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is staff reports. We have updates from the superintendent and assistant superintendent. On the agenda, we'll begin with the Health Task Force update. So at this time, what I will do is, for the very first time, I believe, in the city's history, we're going to hear from the health inspector, who has been by my side, by Dr. Quang's side, over the past many months, addressing a lot of issues in our schools. So again, for the first time, I think, in city history, we have a city health inspector appearing before a school committee meeting. So thank you so much to Darren for joining us. Darren, I'll open it up to you to share any recent updates you'd like to provide to the committee, and then we'll engage in a discussion.
Sure. Well, thank you all for having me here tonight. Appreciate being invited to this. This is something that I feel pretty passionately about, and I'm really happy at the rate of success and where we're going now. There's been a lot of history to this over this last year. I think we're all moving in a really good direction. We're doing follow-up assessments on all of the schools monthly, in and out of the parking lots daily, on the phone with custodials and heads from the schools daily. You know, starting last year, we, we saw that there was a real kick-up in road and activity that's been happening in our schools. Over the past couple of months, there's been a lot of shifting of blame, people pointing at different things. And the one thing that I've come to, my assessment today is a lot different than it was a year ago, or even three months ago. I think we've gotten where we are together. We've made some decisions along the way. We haven't funded things properly, we haven't fixed things properly, and we had some issues with our pest service, contracts, the scope of it, even just disseminating the information. And it's led to kind of a perfect storm. Initially, when this all kicked off, I thought I was looking at two or three violations and why this isn't getting fixed. The deeper we've been digging into this, the more we've seen the problems that have caused this. And it's from the top to the very bottom, from inspections to, you know, putting the right money in the right places to fix problems that we know have been going on. A lot of the stuff that we've come across in this last year, I've found in history over the last 20, 25 years, where people have been trying to get things done, people have been trying to get things fixed. Certain things have been specifically called out and not addressed. And, you know, 10, 15, 20 years later, we're dealing with the results of those decisions. And it's taken us a long time to get to the point that we were at in recent months. But I'm happy to report that for the first time, I think, in the three years that I've been doing health inspections, that everybody involved is aiming in the same direction. We're all firing for a common goal. You know, there's barriers that have been broken down here. Me being here right now is, is kind of an testament to that, there's walls that are coming down. I think we're doing a better job from the city's perspective in assessing this and trying to make our schools the priority they should have been for the last 20 years. And that is everything from, you know, janitors to equipment to things that we need to fix. It's not going to happen overnight, but we've all been attacking it. For the last three months, I've had 500 conversations with Brandy over numerous things we needed to fix, and even just today. You know, you look up at the same spot you've looked at 10 times, and you find another problem that is a result of the construction. So part of what's ongoing is DJ has asked, I'm sorry, Mayor Beergard has asked me to put together a list of, of the things of greater projects that DPW can help us with, put together a list of the things of greater projects that DPW can help us with, things that we need to get on the radar for capital expense projects. And I think, I think we're making a lot of, lot of ground. I was in the tenny today. That school had probably the biggest issue a month and a half ago. The difference between a month and a half ago and today is shocking. It's cleaner than I've ever seen it. Everybody's working on it constantly, and reacting to every single thing that we find. The pest companies' reports are being reacted to. The reporting logs in each, in each school, excuse me, are being reacted to on a daily basis. And I think we're, I think we're doing a great job. Right now, we're engaging and formulating a comprehensive IPM program for all of our municipal facilities, not just the schools. But in doing so, showed me a lot of gaps that we had in our services, and things that we asked for, contracts, et cetera. So, I feel like we're starting at the ground on some of this, and rebuilding a system that's gonna work, a system that's gonna have transparency, just by virtue of, you know, sharing pest reports and the spreadsheets, and communicating directly through city inspections, different departments, and the school. I think we're creating a new path forward. Some of the massive cleanup that happened in the timony and the tenny in the last month and a half has really changed the game. Last year, we had quite a few sightings being reported in the timony. I've had one in the last month and a half. That's promising. We're heading in the right direction. We're not gonna get there immediately. It's gonna be a little bit of a whack-a-mole. That's why we have ongoing assessments, monthly, for the next year, where myself, Brandy, Ian, the head custodians, principals of each school are going through and looking at everything. At this point, we're not just assessing the couple violations we found. There's a lot of factors that contributed to that happening, and we're trying to look at that from the roof to the dirt. And I think, I think we're making some good positive ground. With that, if there's anything I'm missing, or anything anybody wants to ask me?
I think you covered a lot of ground, Darren. And just to stay for the record, to set expectations for any discussion that may follow, I want to point out that Inspector D. is a regulator, not a commentator. So, I just wanna state that to guide tonight's discussion. I'm happy to fill in any gaps, as it relates to any questions that any members of the committee may ask. But with that, I will open it for discussion. Member DeZoglio.
Okay. So, first off, the IPM, I want the public to know, because nobody knows what an IPM is. Aaron, do you mind explaining that to the public?
Sure. IPM is a integrated pest management program. It's a full, front-to-back look at your facility, and the plans are tailored to each facility. For schools, example, like, they can't use toxics or pesticides, so they have a very different IPM from the building down the street. Each one is tailor-made. And each one's kind of, right now, being tailored to what we have for our current situations, and what things we think we need to improve on.
All right. So, then, when it goes to PestEnds, from the reports that I have, they have asked, previously in the past, for the IPM to be changed over time, correct?
Correct, yes. I did just come across some information that showed that the owner of PestEnd was reaching out to a couple of people, trying to update that CI plan, CIP plan, sorry, IPM plan, five to six years ago.
And, and it wasn't completed. So, they had to go based off of the IPM that was initiated by the state, right? They submitted in the state. They have to go off what the IPM is for them to do their job, correct? So, if they wanted to set certain traps for something, and it was, became outdated, or something like that, they couldn't do the updated version of a trap unless it's in the IPM.
Correct.
So, they were going off the old one, which you and I both know, in certain degrees, that might have been ineffective. I know one school had non-deadly trap, it was more of catch-and-release traps type of thing? And that's been going on for five to six years.
Yes.
Also, another thing you and I both know, previously, our logs, I'm glad that the logs don't go now, but previously, both logs that PestEnd has given those schools, if they were to report any rodents inside a classroom, they were to write it in the logbooks, correct?
Yes.
And the books that we saw at the tenny, correct?
Yes.
Were completely empty.
Yes, yeah.
So, right there, PestEnd's response to anything cannot be blamed due to the fact nobody was reporting where rodents were being in the building, correct?
Yeah, I'd say that's, I'd say that's fair.
Also, you and I have gone over these reports for now about a year. Going back, how far has the PestEnd's, like, door sweeps, stuff like that, have been on the logbooks for how long, you would say?
Some of them have been on there for upwards of eight years.
It is. And we have been changing them now. We've been getting them in. But when it came to PestEnd's doing recommendations, they have been eight years past due, some of these things.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot going on with that relationship. I think we didn't have, we didn't have a robust contract in the first place. From my experience in dealing with the 400-plus restaurants that we do, and everybody has pest company, I saw the invoices from the school, and the dollar amount and the scope of work will tell you that it was a very generic contract that we had going. I don't know as if we even had a contract. And it, it wasn't addressing enough. So, I could say, you know, there's always gonna be problems with tax. Maybe PestEnd had a problem with a tech that did the wrong thing here, did the wrong thing there. I would say, we didn't update our program, we didn't have a robust enough contract, we didn't look at the information that was within the report sometimes. And part of that is because we never disseminated it the right way. Principals and custodial heads of each school weren't getting it. The, the people involved in taking care of the pest company in the first place changed repeatedly. You know, so I had mentioned how I heard, you know, that somebody had reached out six, six years ago to try to correct it. It's not who you think. And I'm not here to name names, but it's, I know who, you know, it's not who you think. So, and I don't want to continue to look at the rearview as to what... We need to look in the, in the past to a point. We need to see why we got here, but we're looking to blame. And I think personally, we all own this. I think the starting point was inspections weren't being done right within the city for 20-plus years. I don't think the state has been doing their inspections properly, and we have found that to be the case in numerous other businesses. And then, you know, from the school perspective, some of the things that I see is people trying to make a dollar out of 15 cents. Because, you know, you got the guy band-aiding a boiler, or doctoring this thing up, because we don't have the money to fix it, because we haven't properly allocated the funds to take care of that problem. So, we signed guys up for failure, including, you know, the janitorial and custodial staff, who has been pointed at as if they're the problem. And one of the first things that I came up with, and I questioned Mayor Birguard onsite in one of the school inspections, is how come we used to have 71, and now we have 49? And through further investigation, we actually used to have 75. We have 51, I believe, currently. And in addition to doing the janitorial and custodial work, they're painting, they're putting plaster, they're putting cabinet backs on, they're weed-whacking, because some of them have lost their grounds contract, right? Their support staff, they're showing up for other events. This has brought a deeper conversation. And I, I came up with some stuff that I had passed off to Dr. Quan, probably about a month ago. And there's five different categories for maintenance. And these are, these are guidelines that are set nationally and by the state. And I think by our square footage, and by our people, it would, at face value, say that we're mid-range recommended. When you take into account the support staff, the weed-whacking, everything else, that number changes drastically. I've asked a couple of head custodians of their schools to help me in the next couple of months, and to track their guys, and what they're actually doing, so we can get an idea of what percentage time is spent cleaning. And just, that hasn't come to be yet, but just out of some of the stuff that I've solicited out of these guys, in an eight-hour shift, they're spending two to three hours cleaning. So, by math, that means we should have two to three times the staff that we do, if we expect to have clean and sanitary conditions in our schools. And when you get down to this level five, it calls out that this is gonna lead to the unhealthy conditions, degradation of our buildings, infestations, rodents issues, just things like not having time to change filters in univents, things like that. It's actually called out as something that you could expect to see, if you do this. And we did this, because these are all things that I'm finding in our reports. And the more I read, the more I'm like, you know, wow, this is a bigger, bigger problem. That's part of why I'm here tonight, because we started digging into everything under the sun, under this problem. You know, what things can we fix? And the more we look at, the more deficiencies we found in the system. And we're trying to resolve those, working together, talking about assessment in these capital expense projects. You know, the, these are all numbers that are based off of a normal situation, too, not a situation where they are cleaning up rodent droppings, or, you know, fixing leaks that have happened in the same spot, on the same roof, for 15 years. So, I think we're doing ourselves a disservice. Mayor Birguard has asked me to formulate that list, so that we can, little by little, chip those things away from these guys that shouldn't be dealing with that. And then, they do all that, and they get pointed at as if they're the ones that aren't cleaning, right? So, it's created this disheartened, inefficient morale, right? And, and in the last couple of months, I've seen that turn a lot, just by these guys digging in, doing it, doing it right, and getting a pat on the back for actually doing it. It's gotten better. Dr. Quan's implemented the change protocol, or reset, for the teachers. And a lot of that wasn't really perceived that well. It's all part of a comprehensive assessment that's gonna get us to a better place. When I started this, my mission was to get us to a safe and sanitary level as fast as possible. So, I'll take responsibility for the fact that we rammed so many things at these guys over the summer, that it tipped the apple cart on two wheels. You know, we had to run a summer program out of the tenny. We crippled the other schools with things that we were doing. It was hard, I think administratively, I think, you know, we, we definitely rocked the boat a little bit this year. But they pushed through it. Everybody involved pushed through it every day, and, you know, met me with a, with a smile and a notepad every day. Because everybody involved realizes why we're here. Most of them involved have been asking for these things for years. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry for all of them that it's gotten this far, but now, we're all listening. This administration is very committed to correcting this situ, situation, and for us, this is wonderful. My partner Heidi Spina and I have been working on these health inspections for three years. You haven't been seeing her, because this has gotten so politically difficult and risky as a regulator, to say you have a problem, you have a problem, you have a problem, you have a problem, you have a problem. And we allow this can to get kicked on the road. So, you know, seven months ago, she recused herself from doing this, because she's at risk, right? And I'm, I'm still here fighting this, 'cause, you know, I have a son in the system. I pay taxes here. I hope to hang my hat here for 30, 40 years. And a lot of this is stuff that, if we work together, we can get, we can get taken care of pretty simply.
We can circle back with additional questions in a second round.
Yep.
Member Willett?
I really appreciate the care this evening.
Thank you.
I just had a few questions.
Sure.
In terms of the, the confidence level, is it high that, across the system, we have the proper door sweeps in place across the system? Is it still piecemeal? Is it 80%? Is it close to 100%? What's the confidence level?
That's kind of a wide-open book right there. So, let me go school by school. So, the, the marsh that had issues in the past has had zero issues for better than a year. So, we're not focusing so much on that one, because the envelope is tight. A little over two years ago, I found one door with a missing door sweep. And the head custodian at the time, Doug, who was back here, he was there, and he took care of it before I was even out the door. So, that school was done. The high school had a little bit of an issue that's going on here, and we found the main source of that to be that brick wall that carries from the outside to the inside of the building. It's just, it, it was made to look nice, but it poses all of these exclusion issues, and that's where it was happening. That, and combined with the landscaping not being maintained in the immediate front, gave us our issue here. Currently, there's two components left to exclude over here, and they require some special order stuff that Bruce Stella is working on procuring. The timony, I think, is almost bulletproof. Everything's sealed up on the outside. We do have some expansion joints between structures. It's like caulking, and in some cases, a rubberized gasket that's in there, right? We found some of those things that needed to be done. Those are still in the works. This, the tenny, I think we've got the exterior pretty tight. What we're dealing with now, what I think we're dealing with now, is a small resident population that lives there, that is in the walls and ceilings. And we've been slowly trapping them and getting them out. As of today, the evidence that I found in, in a few small areas was very obviously from babies and juveniles. The catch rate has gone down. And now, it's gotten to the point where the head custodian principal have a floor plan, and if there's a sighting in this office, they go in there, and again, like today, I show them what pipe protrusions, what things are at play in that room. They stuff it immediately, put a temporary sweep on that door, to make sure it's isolated from the hall, see if they got it. If they got it, nothing comes back, they can check that one off. And they're moving around the building, doing this, until it's gone. And it's gonna take a little time. I would expect that we might even have a little bit of a bump-up coming into the colder months, but our goal is to have been, like, hitting this so hard to try to stop that from happening. So, I'm 100% confident in half the schools. I'm probably 95% on the high school and the timony. And after today, I'm probably getting to the 90% range on the tenny. I think we're gonna get there.
And then, have you been granted access to every area of a school system?
Yes.
Okay. Have you encountered classrooms with massive clutter, and that massive clutter has been cleared out?
Yes. I, I had encountered massive clutter in the past, but since these last couple of walk-throughs, no. Very organized, most of the classrooms that I've gone in, we found a couple things here and there, but no, vastly different.
And in terms of the landscaping across the system, and again, with the cooperation of the DPW, which we're very grateful for, how, how is that, what level is that?
So, that's a work in progress. The first thing that I wanted to focus on was clearing the soft envelope of the building, or making a good six-foot swath around the building, to make it challenging for the mice to get there in the first place, and to make our pest boxes more effective. When we started looking at that, we found trees that were growing right into the building and everything. So, we had to take down trees that were causing structural damage, or they were, you know, avenues to get in. There has been some of the stumps ground down. We still have some more stumps that we have to deal with in term, like, in some courtyards. We have one person that does have a stump grinder that can get through a door. We're trying to get that to happen at the timony. I believe you've got somebody coming to do some fancy planting, potentially. The courtyards, the courtyards in the timony. We saw those as a major issue. They were a major source of the infestation, and it was built up. The janitors couldn't get to this anymore. They were so overloaded that the things that are less important had, had to be left. And some of these courtyards had a foot and a half of leaves in corners, right? DPW went in there and cleaned it out, and, and they saw activity while they were cleaning it out. We got additional boxes in there. There's nowhere for them to hide. They can't climb into the building. We found all the holes that we think we could find out there, and, and they're beautiful spaces now, that have been reclaimed to put back into use.
And then, the final thing was, very quickly, I really appreciate that. And I think the overall theme is, this accumulated over decades.
Yes.
Okay? And that's the biggest factor here, that people have to realize that we're cleaning up a mess, that... Okay. And that's the biggest factor here, that people have to realize that we're cleaning up a mess that accumulated over decades.
Yes.
And then the electronic reporting system, I know we have the, the logbooks. I've been a big advocate since the very beginning that the mayor receives those complaints internally from the school system, like a click it, fix it. I'm in favor of that. Um, that's something, I don't know if you want to broach, but there should be some type of electronic port, reporting system that goes directly to the mayor as the chief executive of the city.
Just to add some additional, uh, color to that. So, uh, the inspector, of course, being part of my administration in representing me and, and, uh, taking part in these activities, he receives those. So by default, I, I would consider that the, the administration on the city side in receipt of those, uh, which is great. And to reference something that you mentioned.
I don't think that's happened in the past.
No, correct.
Okay, right? That was a silo.
Never occurred before.
With your administration, Mr. Mayor, and with your involvement, that's been broken down that silo.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, something else that was referenced, I'm not ready to make any announcements tonight. Uh, but I did engage in a walkthrough of several of our buildings with a local, uh, garden landscaping vendor, uh, talking about the prospect of, of getting some design plans to bring the timony courtyards back to life. Um, ditto with the, uh, tenny facade, et cetera. So that's an ongoing conversation. I'll have more to share on that soon. Uh, we can come back for a second round if needed, but, uh, member Shabelia?
So before I get to my questions, I want to point something out. While the inspect, not the inspector, the director for the youth center was standing there talking, I watched you walk that wall, look for holes, come around, go around the bookshelf, look for holes and check things. He can't help himself. And I also saw him at open house at the Marsh for the little kids. And while his wife and son were doing things, he was poking his head in places. And I was like, Darren, take the night off.
When, like every time we walk the same hallway a thousand times, literally we looked up today and went, what is that? Like, that's what we do. Yeah. He can't help it to like look around with a flashlight.
I, I, I now have seen that firsthand.
A new space, a new brick, a new something every time.
Yeah. And the stories that I've heard from, from Dr. Quong or the mayor or from the custodians that I've talked to about how you were just walking through buildings, sticking your hands into random holes and jumping into pits under the building. It's, I, listen. Um, the facilities task force, which is the brainchild of the mayor, was formed to bring together the city, the school and the teachers to combat these issues. But that group really started making its stride with your presence. And without you, that group would not be where it is today. And this progress would not be where it is today. So first off, I want to thank you because you guys, you and Heidi, and I said it before and I'll, I'll say it till I'm blue in the face, you take an awful lot of crap out in the community because you go into places and tell people they're doing a bad job. And nobody likes that guy.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's your job. Your job is to keep us alive. So we're not eating, uh, mouse poop at a pizza place or whatever it is. So, I mean, thank you because you guys get beat over their head. Um, we do our addition and the addition of the DPW and that partnership we have with them, it has been fantastic. Um, so earlier you had mentioned that we are short on staffing on that side of the house. In your opinion, based on the standards that are set, not on historicals, but on your opinion on the standards that are set, how short are we?
That depends on what's in the job description.
If, if things were to stay status quo like they are today, assuming nothing changes.
If they were staying the way they are right now, I would say that we need ballpark close to eighty for what we have fifty-one doing. There's, there isn't the coverage.
Yeah, we're at fifty-one and you think we should be at eighty?
Yeah, that's, that's what my math is telling me. Uh, but we're digging into that more to see if we can better get a grip over it. Because I want to be able to give you guys real information so that you can make the decisions based on.
I mean, I'm putting you on the spot. So giving me a ballpark answer is fantastic.
It's kind of, uh, you know, a little bit ahead of the, the cart, but, um, I would say eighty would be a more, much more comfortable number. Um, you know, for a good example, when we had this issue a month and a half ago at the tenny, the day that I walked in there, the head custodian was there and he was alone. And he had three callouts. He was alone. We had twenty-three classrooms with students in them. We're putting out the food for seven summer feeding sites. Um, and there was one in the building.
I remember the days and the frantic phone calls and all that was.
You know, so this is, this is part of how we got here. So I think maintenance wise, to really get an accurate, uh, assessment of that, we got to fix the extenuating circumstances first. Um, we got to have them not repairing the same leak.
We need to actually fix it, not Band-Aid.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm looking at trying to chip away at that stuff.
With that being said, and acknowledging the fact that the next school committee is coming into what will undoubtedly be a even worse budget cycle than we just had, short of some kind of miracle, um, where do you suggest the focus be in that department? As a budgetary planning perspective, so that plant, that plant, whoa, that seed can be planted with the committee. And for the, the candidates listening, whoever they may be who win in, uh, November.
I don't know the best way to approach that, to be honest. Um, I really don't have that answer.
Come on Darren, I'm coming to you for all the answers.
How we're going to come up with it? I've been putting together lists of ideas to throw at people in the city of other ways that I think we can come up with money that needs to be poured into that. I think we need to infuse money into our school systems. I'm also a taxpayer. My taxes have more than doubled in sixteen years. I don't really want to have a tax hike when I feel like we've been doing so much misspending in the past as a taxpayer. So I think there are some good ways to find money. Um, and there are some good ways to be creative with what we have. So one of the things Mayor Biergard is helping to bridge this with, uh, DPW, um, they have a lot of people in there. They're understaffed. So I'm not saying that they have an abundance of people and they can take care of all our problems. But they have things that we can utilize there. They have electricians, they have plumbers, they have environmental engineers. They have, uh, guys that can come and take a tree down or, or they really know what they're doing, mowing and weed eating. So should we have our guys going out there and doing it? There's, we have to remap this in a different way. In the history that I've looked over, I can see where we removed the maintenance and where we shifted it to the school department. I mean, at one point, the school department was taking care of city hall, police station and all of our other municipal facilities together. The school department was.
No, thank you.
We've made these decisions to shift things around and then we started cutting. And I think, or, or just not funding to keep up with the increase in, in, um, student load. I think our priorities have been misaligned for probably twenty years. And I think this is a new day. I think we're, we're putting our focus back where it should be.
Speaking of priorities, there are teachers watching right now and the one question they want answered is what do you foresee the future being for the rugs?
You know, I knew that was going to come up tonight. Um, well, the rugs. So we have had probably twenty kind, conversations on the side over these rugs. Um, as I said, I have a six-year-old. He's in first grade. I know about circle rugs. I've heard stories about those circle rugs this last two years. Um, and to see how much the teachers care about them tells you how good a teachers we got.
It's the center of the community in the classroom.
The reason for that was sanitation. And there was some pretty adverse things going on with some of those rugs. Um, and I don't want to scare people with horror stories, but they were horrible. Some of them were horrible. And when we look at raising the sanitation level, the air quality reports, things of that nature, rugs can't be sanitized properly once they're contaminated to that level. Unless you were to send them out to like a, you know, restoration company that can put them in industrial steam cleaners. We can't do that. We didn't think that we could bring those rugs back to an acceptable sanitary level, both by equipment and by staff. So, you know, whereas I'm walking into a school one day and there's only one janitor there, how are we going to be shampooing all these additional rugs with our current staffing level? Not possible. Um, didn't even have the proper equipment. The schools this year got really good steamer sanitizer, you know, rug cleaners. Um, and they have made a huge difference on the rugs that we weren't able to tear out yet, the ones that are going to come out next year. But we don't have the manpower to clean those rugs. Um, we, we talked about, can they be, you know, new ones picked up and put down? We don't have the staff for it. The only thing I can commit to is that we're thinking about those circle rugs constantly. And as soon as we can be at a, a level of sanitation where they're not going to be compromised, they're fine. But in essence, circle rug, you've got five-year-olds sitting on it, right? They're part of this highly susceptible population. They're young. They don't have the immune system that we do, right? So we got to look out for them to a higher degree. Um, and they're, you know, they're sitting there crawling around on, rolling around on them. It was the smart and reasonable thing to do. Um, and unfortunately, it's a very tough one to swallow, but we're talking about it constantly. And as soon as something like that can come back in, we're anxious for it. I don't think any one of us wanted to see those come out.
We can circle back for more.
I have one.
Second round?
Okay.
Um, just as to quickly guide the discussion, I want to mention and actually thank the city council uh, for approving, uh, the fiscal year twenty-six capital improvement plan, which includes funding carve-out for continuing the work on the carpets and the replacement of those. Uh, we're going to be taking care of installing, uh, new fire alarm systems, uh, in the schools. And then also, uh, there's a carve-out, I'm pretty sure for the first time ever, uh, carve-out for preventative maintenance in municipal buildings, certainly includes the schools. So I think those are all good things. So I want to acknowledge the council for agreeing to support those. Um, so we've heard from, uh, member DeZoglio, member Willett, member Shabelia for the first round. We'll hear from the vice chair.
I want to thank you for all you've done. Um, all of the conversations I've had with you have been phenomenal and how much you care about our schools. So I really do appreciate that. And I really do appreciate Dr. Quong and you working together so well. Um, that has been a huge win for all of us. Um, my only question for you is, do you foresee in the near future or ever, um, bringing back food in the classrooms in any capacity?
I would vote no on that. You're, you're, this is what's going to attract them into your room if you do ever get a situation where you have them. You know, maybe there will come a day where we'll have no rodents. But if you start bringing the food back into your room, you're going to have ants, you're going to have other things that, uh, come out of that. So. I would leave that up to, uh, superintendent?
Right.
It clearly, you know, we, we had talked about this, right? We did it during COVID because it was a must. And we tried to, uh, carry that forward because it worked for learning. Uh, but now we're in this position. So I would say, based on everything I have lived and learned, I would say no. Uh, you know, get the, get the building in the place where we want it so we can have the, the rugs and things like that in classrooms without worrying about those issues coming to fruition. So I would vote no on the food in classrooms.
Right.
Yes, on the rugs eventually.
Right. I just want to be able to make informed decisions about things like, you know, parties in classrooms based on recommendations from the people who are cleaning our buildings and, you know.
Cafeteria, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would just say if that's a, a party, if this is a holiday party, if this is the kind of thing, if it's achievable or cafeteria, or if there's manpower to clean up after it. And right now we don't have that manpower. So it might, it might contribute.
Great. Thank you.
Other discussion before, member Donovan?
Just two very quick questions. Um, so do we anticipate you to have formal inspections of our buildings? How do, like, how often will that happen now?
Well, um, these assessments are kind of informal. I'm writing up a full list, but it's not an actual inspection form. Um, the inspections for the school's food programs happen twice a year.
Twice a year.
Semi randomly. Um, you know, I'm usually in, uh, in the fall and in the spring to make sure that kitchens are good. But I think we're going to be doing, we're going to be doing this every month this year. And then going forward next year, we haven't really projected this out yet because this is, this is evolving. It's fluid. It's evolving as this problem. Um, next year, if that's still required, that's what I'm up for. If it's quarterly, six months, whatever it is. But I think in addition to the two food inspections, there's going to be at least one full comprehensive building inspection with our department annually.
Does that include any air quality test?
That's a third party that does that. Um, so we don't do that. We did have the state do their air quality assessments. We're working off of their recommendations. Um, and then we see some things that we can improve ourselves. And I think it's going to be on us to make sure that we get that air quality testing done more frequently. It hadn't been done in a long time.
And the other question, I'm just, I think now that it's getting cooler, and I know historically everyone loves to come inside where it's warmer. How are you feeling about maybe a little, should we expect realistically a little bump in visits from our little furry friends?
Yeah, I mean, the activity always goes up.
Yeah.
Coming into the winter. Oddly enough, it always goes up coming into the summer too. I don't know what that is, but yes, in the winter, they're looking for warmth. So we can expect to see heightened activity outside looking to get in. And if we can really do it and we can get it really tight, hopefully we won't see an upkick in the activity. Um, we did see an uptick when the timonies courtyards were being cleaned out. We saw a little bit of an uptick when people were coming back at the tenny. Um, part of it was because everybody was clearing out all of this stuff, right? Filling dumpsters with stuff for a month and a half prior to that. They're losing their hiding spot. So we're getting them and the numbers are going down. So I, I'm really confident we're heading in the right direction.
And finally, I'd like to say, member Keegan and Dr. Quong and then Mr. Goslin, I'm thinking else who was there, the mayor. We went on a six-hour tour of the buildings right before school started. That was a really long day. I appreciated your being part of it. I, I saw how staff greeted everybody who's obviously been spending a lot of time in the buildings. And, um, it just made me feel like we were making great progress. And shout out to the other people who were involved from our, um, inspections department and custodials.
Yeah, my director Kaylee's over here. She's been supporting this process all the way through. My partner, um, several others in, in our department.
So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Member Massimo?
I just want to, um, kind of just go off of what member Keegan said because I feel like that was a loaded question and it was kind of a trap. But, um, there's a, there's discussion about foods being, being brought in for celebrations. And I think I understand what you're saying. Should kids be eating in the classroom every day? Absolutely not. However, if there's an exception to the rule for, you know, maybe celebrations or something like incentives, um, I just want to make it clear that, that you're not like suggesting that, that can't happen. Because I feel like that was a loaded question and it was kind of a setup. So I, I just,
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're not kind of setting that groundwork. There are exceptions to the rules.
That's, uh, you know, I don't want to take away from.
Any celebrations would be in the cla- in the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Like we do now, right? Anything that would be food related, snacks, things like that, they can happen and would be in the cafeteria.
We don't want any food in the classrooms at all.
Yeah, I would still.
No, I understand. I just, I'm.
And, and my part in this is I can make recommendations as to things that I think are contributors, like food in classrooms, things of that nature. So part of me says, yeah, that can be a contributor. Um, but it's not my call to make that. Um, we have policies that have been put forth that are, that are unanimous for all the schools and all the teachers. And if we don't, if we don't follow everything we can on there, if we just leave one or two openings, that's where they're going to capitalize on. And maybe we're not going to make the ground that we need quick enough. But I can't overstep what policies are, are being put into place. So that's really not my call to make.
We could take a couple of minutes for a second round. Member DeZoglio?
Um, so you said earlier that air quality reports haven't been done in a long time. When was the last time an air quality report was done?
We had two this year from the state, but we had full air quality reports during COVID. We had two this year from the state, but we had full air quality reports during COVID.
Okay, I was gonna say, that was five years ago. So when you said we haven't had it in a long time, I was just wanting the public to know, because if we recall, Dr. Kwong.
Required to do that, yes.
Yeah, and also like, remember when I, I stood here and said delayed the opening until we got the air quality reports back in that October year? Because we, so we're in the public, I just want to make clear that people know that wasn't that long ago. It was five years ago during COVID because we were required. I just don't want the public to think like we didn't get those air quality reports. But also, I think what's great about your office compared to, up to last year, until probably around October, November, Dr. Kwong wasn't even receiving your health inspection reports, correct?
Correct.
So that to me is where I think was, like I said, I know I'm, I'm, I'm always about moving, everybody's about moving forward. But I want people to know, because I know in the school committee, in the last couple of meetings, I, me personally, I've been hammering. But I want people to know there has been another side of that where Dr. Kwong wasn't even allowed to talk to you guys in some capacity before, correct?
Well, I don't know what her parameters were on her side. On my side, and I don't, I'm not gonna point at anybody in particular or name names. But for a year and a half, I was directly told to not contact anybody within the school that I go through my director. My director goes through, chief of staff goes through, mayor goes over to her, goes on down from there. So there's like fifteen points of contact to get the message over where it needs to be. The issues that we're talking about now, we were bringing up three years ago. Because we were seeing it. At that time, we do the food inspections, kitchens, food permit. The person that runs the food program, Mr. Robert Frady. And we've always done the kitchen inspections and relied on the state to be doing the full school inspections. So we weren't doing the first full school, but we were seeing the evidence in the cafeterias. And we had to denote it on Mr. Frady's reports for his kitchens, because that's the eating space. So we had to denote it. I went through about a year and a half of him telling me, I'm trying, but this isn't getting done. I'm trying to get this done, but this isn't getting done. So I don't know how much was being given to his side as to what, right? But I was directly told not to contact anybody. And after four or five months of, of eating this every day, that day I sent the email out and included Brandy and, and Mr. Stella on it. I decided that morning if I got fired for that, I was gonna get fired for that. And I would end up either part of this committee, part of the city council, or part of something else to make sure that this happened. And I walked back in the office and my partner Heidi turned around, I looked at her, he says, you're gonna get fired for that one. And I didn't. It was on record, so they couldn't, I guess. So yeah, prior to that, I would have loved to reach out to these guys and had this discussion. Because we, we hid the problem. We hid from it. We didn't want to address it. And, and by we, I say us over there. I don't know how much was even getting to these guys. And then when I think I finally did send that email, you know, it was a few months before it was perceived as I gotta answer this guy, right? No offense to anybody in the room, but these are these separate silos that we had going on. And I understand that. A few months later, it hit a head, and there was no more walking away from this. And you were there that day. That's brought us all together to, to fight this together. And some information I know that Dr. Kwong didn't have, that I have found. I've seen things that she's asked for, for years and didn't get. I found stuff that Bruce has put together. And fifteen years ago, he was the first person to put together a CIP plan for our city, and the mayor asked him to do so. And it made it past city, uh, school committee and died at city council. In that CIP plan is a lot of the things we're talking about today. You know, so I think he's been villainized to some degree that he's not doing his job. Thirty years, this guy's been fixing everything under the sun and band-aiding everything in our schools to help save us the money and to help keep them running. And that, again, is trying to make a dollar out of fifteen cents, right? I think, I think we, I think we owe everybody involved a little bit of a group apology, because we all own it.
So one more, one more, Mr. Mayor. So before, and this is why, going back fifteen years ago, but if you saw the, and I want, this is just because I want the public to know this. I'm glad that you're here. You, I've been saying it, the fact that you're here makes it all come to light. Previously, health inspectors, how, I think one of the issues is how could things come to a head? Because there's always this question that everybody knew. Well, according to the health inspection reports previous to you guys, we were getting health inspection reports that said, facility perfect, facility great, facility wonderful. And so when things like Bruce Stella brought to the city council, when you're getting health inspection reports that are perfect, well, it's really hard to do that. But I, I've been on the school committee for five years, and people said to me, well, you knew, you knew, we all knew. I go, no, I didn't know, because previous to you guys, I, I never received a health inspection report. But if I was to go back previously before you got, you and Heidi came in, I would have gotten a report saying, your facilities are perfect.
Yeah.
Correct? Yeah. And it wasn't until May of last year, where I saw the May one where you guys went and hit us with twelve violations. And then within six months, twelve.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's, and then literally five months later, you hit us with like fourteen. And that's how you and I met. That, that was, finally, that was the, the nail on the head right there. But I just wanted people to know, and again, I'm not trying to find excuses. I've already apologized. We should have known. But I want, I want people to know the history behind this. Because you and I both know, I know the history, and we all know the history. And it was multiple players involved that, you know, if you see the documentation, it shows that we were perfect in some degree. So, and now, with the right people in place, we're finding out that we weren't. And that's why I'm happy with everybody in the health, the health inspectors, you, Kaylee, Heidi. I appreciate all of you, especially putting up with me for the last year.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Anyone else for second round?
Yep.
Member Willeth and then Member Shabelia?
Just very quickly, I had received within the last year or so confidential photographs, which I forwarded to Ian, and in particular, it was the Tenny Grammar School. It was bookcases and behind bookcases was outdated books and papers. And sometimes holes or methods for the, the rodents to travel back and forth. At this stage, I'm gonna use the Tenny as an example, because that was the most recent egregious level that, you know, merited inspection report and a whole team amassed at the, at the Tenny. How were the, the classrooms in terms of the, the bookcases, behind the bookcases, the clutter? Any, any holes, you know, with the, the steel wool that, that's usually will, you know, are patching it? How is that right now that, based on your visual?
So, great. Really, really good. So the head custodians at the Timony, the Tenny, and I believe the Marsh are the three schools that were dealing with the cabinet backs being blown out. The Timony was completed first, the Tenny at last I knew only had six left, but that was weeks ago. So I'm assuming that those are done. We found a lot. I think they had sixty-some-odd different units in one school where the back kick plates or the back plate of the cabinets, it's the way they were built. So there's a univent, piping goes through the wall, they built the cabinets, and then there's like this thin board on the back. And they get knocked out from books and sliding things in there over the years. And we found those to be major highways. This whole pipe chase way is all highway. So they had to repair the backs of some hundred-plus cabinets in a matter of two months' time to try to stop them from getting into the rooms. The clutter was all removed. All the freestanding bookcases and islands or any of those were sanitized, wiped down. And all the floors were done, I think, pretty thoroughly. We went through and filled, I, I say we, I didn't fill them. I just pointed them out and, and the head custodians have been filling them. Hundreds and hundreds of holes for walls, radiators. And at this point, it's gotten down where they're just going room by room based on if there's a sighting or if there's some evidence found. So I can't really tell you how many holes are left and how many are filled, but.
You'll find them.
Yeah, yeah. I think by the end of the year, I hope we find them all.
And I have to emphasize again, again, I appreciate everything you've said.
Thank you very much.
You started us with candor. I want the transparency. I want those reports. I want the bridges. I want the silos down. So that was something that I, if this is still gonna be an ongoing issue.
Yeah.
I don't want to, you know, allude anybody that this is fixed automatically. This is gonna be in the next year or so at least, and then we have capital improvements that have been neglected for decades. Thank you.
Very welcome. Member Shabelia?
So the mayor started this whole thing off by saying that this is the first time ever that you, your predecessor, your department has been here and done this. So, I mean, I think to your point, we're, we're, we're seeing that. We're seeing those silos start to crumble. The, the story you just told about how you were directed by city hall to not interact with the schools, I can't, I can't even adequately convey how ridiculous that is on public access television, because that's, it's, that's insanity. The fact that you can stand there and tell me that you have documentation going back fifteen years that Bruce prepared to say that these are the problems we need to fix, and that those died with the council of the time and the mayor of the time. Like, I think, you know, you're right. A lot, a lot of people have been villainized. Nope, nobody is scot-free. Nobody is perfect. There, there's oodles of blame to go around. But to, to say that and be able to show that and be able to expose that, that skeleton, I think when a lot of the folks who have been serving in municipal government kind of came up through the ranks, the mentality was you keep the skeletons in the closet. And I think that we're very much past that mentality. Because I know that, I don't know if it was our second, maybe our third meeting, both Member Maxwell and I sat in almost these very seats. And she told everyone about how she dealt with the mouse poop at the Timony, and I told the story about how I dealt with it at the Tenny. And it's, I just, I find it funny slash frustrating how we can say we didn't know, but yet we take the word of folks as gospel when they say other things, but when they tell us about the mouse poop, we didn't know. So like, all of that aside, we're fixing it now and that's what matters. Better late than never. Your department had issues prior to your arrival, this school committee, and the mayor's office had issues prior to our collective arrival, and we're doing it. Now, back to my questions. The DPH reports that we did on the all-day events with them at the Timony and the Marsh, are there any outlying or lingering open issues from those that need to be dealt with?
I think we can still improve on the air quality in, in the Marsh. I think there are some contributing things there. We almost got the boiler taken care of this summer. That fumbled a little bit. That's gonna happen in the future. Even today, Brandy and I were looking at vents and the need for cleaning it up. And, and I'm gonna reach out and look into what grants or if there is any assistance that can help us with that, because the ventilation has built up and it's dirty.
I think.
So you're not getting the flow.
Yeah, we're not talking about like the cleaning it from what you can see.
Talking about.
When you take it off and you look inside and like, how do you, how do you, the, the.
Duck cleaning?
The duck cleaning, which is pretty massive in the schools our size to do that, right? So that was another conversation we had today. It's not about like, that looks clean, right? It's take it off and what's inside. And it's not the air fil, the air filters in a univent can be taken, it's physical, right? You take it out and you replace it. We do that. But the duck cleaning is a whole different ballgame.
Thirteen miles of ducting that runs through a building?
And this is, this is gonna let itself to.
Today. How do we do that?
This is gonna let itself to the system efficiency, but more importantly, like, the further you get from the source, the less airflow you have. So in some schools, we have staircases that are at the end of this, and they're not getting any airflow. So the moisture condensates, and it creates more problems that custodial staff has to deal with. I know there's some second-floor windows that, there's a discussion about getting those replaced. So a few of those things are gonna come over this year and the following year. I think the, the overall air quality, if you were to test it now versus then, would be a drastic difference with the removal of the rugs, clutter, the complete cleaning. There's been a lot, the filter changing and the univents and, and everything else. There's a nice protocol for that. And everyone that I've looked into has got beautifully clean filters in them. And in the past, they weren't. Not because anybody wasn't doing their job. They just didn't, they had too much job to do, so they weren't getting to them. I can't think of anything else that's on that report. We haven't started digging into or completed.
All right. My last question. Tell us about the goats.
The goats. Well, it came up as a half-joking conversation in a task force meeting, because another town I saw did this, and we got talking about it. And it seemed like a funny thing to try and see if it works, because goats are four-wheel drive. They'll climb up a hill, they'll climb over anything, they'll, they'll get to it and they'll eat it. And until they run out of food, they're gonna keep going at the problems. So some towns have used this for their, you know, difficult terrains or terrains where they have a lot of poison ivy in it, because they love to eat the poison ivy. So we had them out last week. DJ lined that up and got them out and.
I remember he jumped up out of his chair during our task force meeting to run out and call the, the goat people.
It was funny to see, and this was just a trial to see how they did, right? They did a pretty good job cleaning up over there and.
The goats shall be back.
Yeah. And, and, you know, there are school systems, there's another school system that I know of that this company deals with. And at this point, after four or five years of doing it at that school, he just shows up and he dances them around a few different areas in the school where they have these issues over a period of a month. And we don't have to have extra staff to climb down in there, try to rip the poison ivy out, which these guys don't want to deal with that anyway. And then it, in the case of the CGS and, and that walkway, we walked back there and it was a major concern. The little kids use that. And as I'm standing there looking at the ivy with everybody, there's all these little girls and boys right over in it with their shorts on.
Yeah, that's where the soccer balls go during practice and games.
This out. So it was way outside the box thinking, as far as Methuen is concerned, right? It was fun. It was cool to see. I mean, everybody likes goats. Who can have a problem with the goats, right? And I think they're gonna prove to be useful to some of that situation.
I misspoke just now. The goats won't be back. They'll be back.
Oh, come on.
Couldn't resist. Sorry.
That'll be a meme tomorrow.
That'll be a meme.
See, this is definitely.
Teddy, you have that, right?
The one right here, right?
So the, the, the stuff the goats ate, the poison ivy, that's gonna grow back. Do we, do we have to now have our goats on retainer? Or do we, now that it's gone, do we send someone in there to kind of do massive removal and?
Here's the thing. It's school property, so you can't use herbicides. You can't use things that work. You just can't.
You can use a shovel.
Everything that I can use at home, you can't use here. So yes, it does grow back. But if anything, if you go and you take off all the vegetation and all you leave is the roots, some of it's gonna come back. If you take it off again, less is gonna come back. Less is gonna come back. So in the city of Belmont, this farm, he services their schools. And there was one area that was much worse than that, he described. And he said after four years or something, it's down to less than ten percent. It's almost gone out of this area, because they just keep picking the green, and eventually it dies off. That's really the only way you can combat this on a school where you can't use the chemicals. Or you're gonna have to have an army of people go in there and rip out the roots. And everybody's gonna be covered in poison ivy and calling out sick for a week, and nobody wants to do it. So I think it's gonna be an effective way to, we don't want to clear the woods. We want to beat that ivy back so that the five and six-year-olds that are walking down that path aren't getting it on their. aren't getting it on their ankles. And I think they're gonna be really effective to do that.
Not a bad idea.
And pretty cost-effective too. I mean, it's 150 bucks a day for an army of mouths.
I called them from my house.
It was, it was a little more than that, but still, I'll agree, cost-effective.
Well, there's a drop-off fees more.
Right, exactly.
There's no, no sick time when they get poison ivy.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion?
If not, we'll close it out. I wanna say thank you for all your incredible work. You are a ninja. Heidi is a ninja. Kaylee, thank you so much for putting up with me in my push to place such a focus on this. You guys are doing incredible work and we'll keep getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for listening to me. And I'll see you in the morning.
We'll move on now to the staffing update. Superintendent?
All right, so I will have a part of the conversation next is the school committee reports, which is a discussion which we'll go into. But as far as staffing goes, at this point, we are looking at 13 professional staff, 50 program assistant openings. And that sounds like, but we're in an actual better place than we were last year at this time. We ended the year with, I think, 74 program assistant openings. We are still processing, like, we're, this first two weeks of school, we're still processing new hires. So I'm hopeful by that October meeting, we'll have sort of who's starting with us for the year. Unfortunately, all of the openings are in the special ed department. So we don't have any core content area openings in the school, which is great. So a little, you know, those are concerning. With our school psychologist speech BCBAs, we still have open, we're just not getting any applicants. So Gina, Colleen, and myself have been meeting and talking, more so Gina and Colleen, really working together on where are our priority contracted services needed? How much money do we have in the operating budget with positions that are open that we've already have approved? And working with fewer contracted service providers this year than last year, who were much, were much more responsive to us and provided much, much needed, I think, trained staff compared to other contracted service providers. So it's, it's a work in progress. We're getting people in. So we already have contracted service providers in the, in the buildings. You know, our priorities would be the one-to-ones, classrooms with no hired program assistants, where we're putting support, classrooms with intensive needs, you know, toileting, things, feeding, things like that. So we're working through that. So I will have a better idea from you guys, what you want from us for reports after our next discussion. But I also feel like I'll have a better handle on this space and time. Again, we still have people going through the HR process. It's not, what was taking a day or two for quarries and fingerprint return is now taking a week. So we get, you know, stuck. And now everybody's been through that, where we get stuck in these sort of, you know, like, we just get stuck with the state returning those reports at this time. We've been really lucky all summer. They've been turning around really quickly. But now, I think Colleen said like, a week. Again, we were used to a 24-hour, 48-hour turnaround so we could get people in quick, but that's not happening right now. So we're at that mercy, unfortunately. So I'll keep you guys posted and updated.
Thank you for the update.
Yep.
The open positions in the special ed department.
Yep.
Had we moved forward with that constellations agreement that we were hoping to during budget cycle? Would we have the same issue right now?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we, we took, we have, we are gonna look at, so hold on, ooh, rewind. Just rewind for a second. We are using constellations for two of our classrooms right now at the Marsh. We had zero staffing in those classrooms for our sub-separate students, elementary. So we pushed all of our staff that were hired into the other classrooms. Constellations is going to provide all of the staffing for the two classrooms. Unfortunately, they weren't able to get a staffing until September 22nd full-time. So we did have to move the students in those rooms. We placed them into the other rooms for the first few weeks of school. Both Gina and Colleen, the SEA, at the Marsh, I was also there for one of the evenings for parents, if they had questions. Notices went out, so people knew what was happening and why. So right now, we're in, I think, Gina spent a good part of the day there. I'm gonna spend a good part of the day there tomorrow, just supporting the staffing concerns, watching what's happening, so we have a better understanding of what the needs are, if there are increased needs. But part of it is too, those, those classrooms are also waiting for some of our staff to be processed. So they're not quite, right, we're, we're sharing right now, they're not quite fully staffed with the staff they need that is in process. So in the next week or two, we'll have more staff that will be added to the ASD classrooms at the Marsh. So it's, I say no. What we wanted in full definitely isn't in effect. Y'all didn't vote that, we didn't put it in the budget. But, but after looking at the staffing that we had approved in the budget and what we actually need to do, we condensed that, so we have these two classrooms that we needed contracted servicing for. And constellations has been wonderful working with us to figure out how to do that. They're also gonna be providing us some professional development just for the ASD program this year for this professional staff and the program assistants when they're with us for PD. So that's been an ongoing plan that we already had planned for, but in addition, so work in progress. So, you know, we said this, right? A contract isn't gonna fix this problem if there's not people who want these jobs, just in general. So a little bit better place than we were last year, but still not quite at the place where we want it to be.
Dr. Quan, can I just add?
Please.
That out of those 13 professional positions that are vacant, the majority of those are school psychologists.
Yeah, I've got four school psychologists, three speech...
I just wanna put that in perspective.
It's related service providers. We've got three speech, four school psychologists, two BCBAs. That makes up most of them. And then a couple of them are actually like inclusion teachers or somebody we just, we keep taking down and reposting, taking down and reposting, we can't find.
Thank you. Move on to the school committee reports update.
So for me, I, I put that on there because, just going back to my notes from like, May-June, there was a lot of conversation about reports. Do we want them? Do we like them? Do we not? There were enrollment reports, there were discipline reports, there were very many different thoughts about these reports on a monthly basis. So, so I just felt, we're here. What is it that the school committee wants on a monthly business basis from us? Is really what the discussion is, because everybody was asking me what to provide for this meeting, and I just put it on pause, because again, the last couple of meetings, everybody had very different opinions about what was useful, what was not useful. What do we wanna, what do we wanna continue? What do we wanna not, we don't need anymore? I think really, I'm just opening this up for what do, what does the committee want from my administration for monthly reports? What information is critical for us to have on a monthly basis?
Member Willet?
I'm honestly fine with a lot of the reports being reported to us quarterly. I think...
What did you say? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
When we acclimate back to school, like, for residency, you're still in the process of reviewing some of those residency statuses. And the enrollment, if we do it, I think, every couple of months or quarterly, I think we need to focus on what we're doing with the education, with the examination of the test scores. I think we too much go into the weeds of data. And I think we wanted to streamline the minutes of the meeting. I think we accomplished that. I think we were dealing with, with the crisis that's now abating, that we're still working on in terms of maintenance and operations. So those monthly reports could maybe become quarterly reports. The enrollment numbers could be every couple of months. I really am interested, I even appreciate the fact that we're doing electronically with our packets. Because I think it, any type of effort to streamline government is, is great. We're in the digital, electronic age, so long as we're open and transparent, I think we can do that on a, you know, every couple of months or quarterly basis. That'd be my opinion.
So it's the, it's the content of this, the reports that we provided, is that, are we in agreement to carry those forward? So one from student services, we'll have staffing from HR. The, the reports that were coming straight from IC, which I think you're talking about the enrollment. We wanna just carry those forward? Yes, I'm seeing some nods. I just need some, like, I need some direction on making sure, yes. And quarterly, so we can do like, October, January, March, May? Does everybody like that cadence? October, January, March, May?
You know, may I, the only thing I worry about is, I think about Ms. Bozak's reports and looking at where we're going money-wise, especially in terms of transportation. I, I wonder if that's something that we need to really stay on, or just to be aware of more regularly? Because boy, that was stunning stuff. I don't wanna wait until January to find out, like, whoa.
So specifically from McKinny Vento, from homeless?
Yes, that's where we really got to the...
Yeah, so maybe we could do something abbreviated with enrollment, McKinney Vento, transportation, finance.
I don't really wanna give that up.
But the rest of them, you guys are all comfortable with doing four in a school year? No? No, I, now I don't, I'm not seeing.
Well, no, I was gonna say, like, if that's the case, maybe some reports we get on a monthly basis when it comes to transportation, stuff like that, like, we were all saying, but I also think for the next school committee members coming in, this question should be brought back up to them as well and see how they feel about it. I just don't wanna set that tone for us for the beginning. And then they come in, and then we've, we've already set this bar going for everybody. I just feel like...
So we could keep everything, I mean, we have three meetings.
Yeah.
I mean, really only, right, you have October, November, December. If that is happy to carry on what we were doing, we'll just carry that forward on a monthly basis. And maybe this is a conversation that I'll ask the next committee in January. These reports are what we wanna carry forward, or do we wanna do something different?
I think that works.
Yeah.
Why don't just do that? So carry forward, so we'll do a staffing, a student services. Okay. Hey, at least I have clarity. That's good. So erase the quarterly. Got it.
Next on the agenda is all business and other pending matters. We have none on the agenda. Onto new business now. We need a motion and a second to approve the transportation contract.
So moves. Second.
Motion from, motion from Member Shabilia, second from Member DiZoglio. Discussion?
Yes.
Member Shabilia.
Who wrote this?
So, it was a formatted transportation contract from Attorney McNulty, going between GoBeacon and him, from our bid, from our RFP.
So it covers all of the general stuff, the qualifications, the indemnification. I'm not really concerned about the legal clauses in here. I'm concerned about the business commercial clauses in here. There's nothing in, so when I called you the other day to say, hey, can we talk about busing on the agenda?
Yeah.
It was out of response to three different parents that I had talked to over the past two days that said they had had problems with the vendor. They had called the shop in, over on Cross Street or Hable Street, whatever it is. And not that they just weren't helpful, but they were rude and then hung up on them. And it was a consistent message. There is nothing in this document to guarantee or even put some teeth to them providing, I don't even wanna say a quality service, but a less than horrendous service.
So it was taken from the, whatever we put in the bid, we captured in the contract.
Which I know we talked about in that subcommittee with, I can't remember the guy's name.
Rich.
Rich. Because that was, that was a big thing, these, these, the concept of these SLAs, the service level agreements, them doing, how many bus runs were completed on time? I don't, I don't know how you track that, considering their technology is probably farther behind the cities than anything else. But this, this document, like, they're... We, should, we, when was the last time we checked their buses to see if they had more than 175,000 miles on them? Because it says that we're gonna do that. Like, it says that we're gonna, we have the ability to do maintenance, inspection and maintenance records within a 72-hour request. I'm willing to bet we've never done that, and I know that we've had buses that have broken down over the last three years with kids on them. Routes will be planned in order for students to arrive on time for their school day and to be picked up on time at the end of their school day. So getting them on school, getting them to school on time, I think is a, that's, that one might be a little bit on the touchy side. Picking them up at the end of the day, if you're the first or the second, by the time the lower school kids get picked up, there's a delay. And I know that, just, just for the Marsh, because that's all I can speak to, because I get the messages from talking points that the administration sends out because the buses are late every day. I know it's staffing. I see you going for the button.
No, I'm gonna tell you, and I can only speak for Big Bus, the beginning of this year has been remarkably good.
Yeah?
We've had one bus at the Marsh that, actually, it's on my notes to find out exactly why she's been out, and Bus 3 and 8 have been covering it. But I believe there's someone at the Marsh who sends out a talking point to everybody, rather than just a message to Bus 28. We do send an email out to Bus 28 individually, so that the parents are aware that the bus might be late. So that's probably the route that's been late. So I can tell you, big buses, bumps, bruises here, like, you know, first day, a bus misses a stop because, you know, it's a new stop, that kind of stuff.
First day jitters, yeah.
Yeah. But I can tell you between this year and last year, as far as big buses go, remarkable. So I can't speak to, and not again, I don't know if those parents were calling for a big bus issue or a special ed bus issue. But I can absolutely speak to the Methuen, or the Drakehead Terminal guy and have him speak to the people about how they address people, if it was the Drakehead Terminal.
What do you mean Drakehead Terminal? I thought we were up in...
Well, the big buses come out of the Drakehead Terminal, the small buses come out of the Methuen Terminal. So, so there's kind of a head over there who would have to address those people. There's a different person at Drakehead Terminal that I'm more than happy to have that conversation, but I was unaware of it.
Yeah, I mean, when people, I get these, whether it's a Facebook message or text, a phone call, I send them to you. Whether or not they call you is a completely different story.
Right.
Because I, I am not the bus manager man. None of us are. Well, you are. But that being said, there's, there's nothing in this contract to point to performance. And I know we talked about it, I know it was an issue. I know that Rich agreed with it. But this, this contract is going to set us up where if they decide to slip, we're stuck with them. And then we're, we're a prisoner again, because we can't afford for a student. And if these guys can't hold up, we have no recourse other than to call on their bond. But then, even if we call on their bond, now we can't get our kids to school because we don't have buses. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a rock and a stupid spot. I don't know. I got beeped. I'll wait for my, my second part.
I mean, can I just comment though? I, I think, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think there are places in here that capture it, and it's very, like, 6.4 captures some non-performance issues. You have places where that's, there's points in this contract. I mean, I also want you all to remember the contract that we previously had was about a page and a half with absolutely nothing in it, right? So this truly captures, like, if they're not providing those services, then come the end of September, we actually can look at this and say, you aren't dropping our kids off on time and you're not picking them up. What are we gonna do differently? It does hold us to that. Certainly far more than we have ever had in the past.
Right. But in 6.4, we're not gonna contract with substitute busing and incur cost. We're, I mean, for gen ed busing, we're, we're not. We're not gonna... We're not gonna call for a student and be like, hey guys, throw us one bus, we need you for a route today. Like, that's never going to happen. There, how, I'm sorry, like, there's nothing in here that says we're gonna, we can track and that, you know, they're, they're committing to X amount of service, you know, barring, you know, maybe A, B, and C, maybe it's weather, I mean, there was a stretching time over the summer where Methuen was one giant detour, which I understand, it's gonna happen and it's gonna impact transit, but kids shouldn't be getting home at 4:30 when they get on the bus. And that's been, that's been happening. I don't know how often, because I have a very small slice of the world that is my segment of reality, but I can assume if it's happening to one bus, it's probably happening to others.
From Member Donovan, then Member Willett.
So, 14.3, so, if I'm right, this information about how the bus company will be penalized for failure to really just provide safe conditions.
Performance.
Right, that was not part of our process in the past.
No.
Which, and which is great.
What you're seeing here, none of this was in our, I mean, some of it was, but our previous contract with NRT was very, very minimal.
I think this is really good, and, you know, could, I hate to say it, we could be getting some revenue out of this in some sick way, right? But, the only question I have is how this is, the review process, for instance, if a driver is having inappropriate music and smoking while he's driving and yelling and swearing, whatever. What happens though if the cameras are not working? For years, that was the big issue, the cameras aren't, you're trying to investigate something and the cameras aren't working, is, what do we do? I mean, I thought we talked about last time that the cameras had to work, wasn't that in?
That's there too.
Is it? Did I miss it?
It's, it's, all of the, all of it has to be working and in performance, it was part of our bid of what the expectations were.
I just, so I must have missed it as I read it, but that's.
Yep.
Where is it?
I don't know what section that's in, but there's also another section early on that makes sure that they adhere to any ordinances, so that's already been done, because the city put an ordinance in for cameras, I've already sent that off.
Okay.
So there's like a catch-all for anything that the city puts in place that they have to agree to.
Automatically.
Yes, that they have to agree to, so we worked that through as well.
Okay.
So that wasn't, we didn't go against any of the, the bid or the RFP.
Gotcha.
And they're.
I mean, I think.
Well aware of that at this point.
I'm pleased to see this. I can imagine it's gonna be more work for you, Mr. Goslin, in some cases, the, the addition of behaviors that don't really meet our expectations.
The staffing, we've already had some, I have to say, you know, we've had a couple of issues that I think I will say, I'm not gonna speak for Gino or Ian, but Ryan Brophy, who I don't think, and if he was here, he didn't speak, but he has now become like our main contact person for when we have issues. There's different people they contact for dispatch, but Ryan has been the one from Go Beacon that, when I email, I email him and he responds, and there's action, and he calls. And we had a situation where there was a very challenging phone call between a parent and a, and a person on his staff, well, his call, they're, they're recorded, and they did take action. So, you know, that, those, we're, we're starting to feel that somebody's listening and we're getting response, and I can say, in all of my years in this district, I've never felt that from people who are not our dispatch, who are on our cell phones, right? So, he's been incredibly responsive to us, he has been part of, which we have to like reschedule and set up weekly meetings, check-in meetings with NRT, he's on those and facilitates those at this point. So I do think there's a different sense of attention to our concerns, and if we, and I think parents have brought that to our attention, that if a parent shares with us what's happening and we contact the right people, there are things that are happening or changing. I'm not, I think when parents reach out themselves, they get a very different response depending on who answers the phone, doesn't answer the phone, who's there, who's not there. I think there is that, that they do need to work on, but I would certainly encourage any parent to reach out to us if they have issues, so that we can contact them as well to make sure we're in a cycle, that they know things are happening.
Do you guys log?
Not saying it's perfect, that's for sure.
Oh, sorry.
I'm good, thanks.
We'll hear from Member Willett.
I'm just concerned about in terms of the quarry, sorry, and the fingerprint.
Yep.
Is that, there's a provision that, when there's a failure, let me just read it quickly, assigns drivers or monitors, and this is under the penalty component, to transport Methuen students without having completed satisfactory background check approved by Methuen. Now, that's done jointly between the contractor and Methuen before those people even go onto a bus. As a monitor or a bus driver, how is that even possible that that would be a penalty? That, to me, is a major loophole, that it would have to be a greater penalty. Under no circumstances would I have someone that has not completed a satisfactory background check, either quarry, sorry, or the fingerprint, then come back later and say, oh, by the way, you didn't pass it, so we can't have you as a monitor or a bus driver. That's a major glaring loophole. I don't have any comfort factor in approving this contract until that's shored up. Because I don't, again, it's, I think right now, if I'm reviewing it, it's a hybrid approach. You have the contractor working in conjunction with Methuen, which I assume is the HR department, to go through these quarry checks. And I've said a while ago too, that the hybrid approach in terms of quarry, sorry, is soily lacking in terms of a safety component. The fingerprint with the FBI database is nationwide, it's more comprehensive. Quarry, sorry, is just state-based adjudication. So, going like, again, I think the vendors for the bus drivers and maybe the monitors, I think they're the only group that in subsequent years, I think after three years, they have to go through the same background check again, but it's diverted to quarry, sorry, without the benefit of the fingerprints with the FBI database. That's a major loophole, and I can't understand how, under the penalty phase, if someone doesn't satisfactory pass that quarry, sorry, check, that we're gonna just have a financial penalty, that something should be, either someone should be fired, or someone is, just assigning someone to a bus without our knowledge as a, as a stopgap, but I will not accept a contract, there has to be something major, that's a major liability for this community.
Can you just point to me where you, I, I don't see anything that says it's just a financial, that's not necessarily the case, a penalty maybe.
I'm assuming, because it talks about penalties.
Right, but a penalty may be staffing penalty, which is what we're dealing with.
Well, I just don't want to remove somebody that is not, I mean, again, you go through, before you have been hired, you go through, I think in corporate America, they're not gonna just have you go into working at a hospital on a temporary provisional basis, and then by the way, a month later, oh, it came back flagged that you're a sex offender.
Yeah, but what, what we're saying in this contract though, is that we are not gonna allow anybody to drive our buses without that completed thing. I'm, I'm, maybe I'm not understanding what you're asking, I'm, I'm reading the statement that's.
Why would it be necessary as, as a penalty phase if you're already done the work and it's already on record? Unless someone either falsified the paperwork, or let somebody on a bus to drive without going through you guys.
This is what I'm saying, so if, if it's the penalty of, they've done it without our approval, where our contract says you can't do that, and that's not allowed, right?
But you, they're working in conjunction with Methuen to clear these people in advance. You have the evidence of the road, I think there was a component about road performance that has, the evidence has to be provided to you guys. I guess the, the drug testing, that I think automatically should be provided to you guys, and then I think you're working.
Shouldn't be in penalty section, that's what you're.
No, no, I think everybody should be cleared before they go on a bus as a monitor or a bus driver. It's not like all of a sudden we catch these guys.
Agreed, okay. Agreed.
Okay. I mean.
Can I, Dr. Quan, can I just add, based on a discussion that was presented la, last year when the bus company was here, I think part of that might speak to times that they may do a cover driver that we're unaware of, that may have not been cleared by us, and then we find out.
Okay. Any driver that drives our bus, I don't want to have a repeat of maybe a situation in Boston.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I don't want that.
Neither do we.
Okay, so, that's something that's a glaring loophole, I know if we can correct it, between, maybe table the proposal? I don't know, but it's, it's a glaring loophole to me. And also, again, I would love to see as a comparison with the city of Haverhill, because they have NRT, they always talk about penalties. I'd love to compare what they have as a contract versus what we have as a contract, and see, again, what we can shore up. Because, again, it's kind of nebulous what we're talking about in terms of penalties, and I'm certainly not gonna vote on a proposal that doesn't shore up the loopholes with the enforcement. I'm not gonna have people on a bus, even as a backup, that's not, and I don't, I'm not a big fan of quarry, sorry, to begin with. Thank you.
So, I'm in, I've been listening to everybody, and I also agree, me and Dr. Quan have dealt with NRT for five years, and I think they're awful. The fact that I'm here, it's remarkable, this year is like a miracle, and Ian should have knocked on wood for right now. So, for the big buses, I can't wait for the winter to come, and that's when all those drivers will start calling out sick. That's how I feel about them. But also, like I said, I've been reading the contract, and with all these things about like, membership, you brought up, who's gonna be checking the tire, like, the tires, the mileage, all this stuff? It sounds all great, but are we sending someone out to check the tires and making sure that they're good? Like, who, who's gonna be doing this? This is part of the contract.
Well, it's brand new to the contract, so I guess we have to determine that, and you're probably looking at them. Not that I would.
Yeah.
Or the transportation director.
Yeah. So you're.
It's, I mean, it's new in the contract, so we'll have to figure out how we get all their mileages and all that other stuff, but we'll do it.
All right. Yeah, for Ian.
Should we table it?
Yeah.
Member Shabilia?
Just quickly going back to Member Willett's comments, I think the purpose behind clarifying the, the quarry, sorry, which I agree has, has holes, the example being if I get, if I'm a bus driver but I get arrested in New Hampshire, it's not gonna show, we're a border community, so it's something that realistically hits home more for us than other people. But, as someone who has run quarries in the past, we need to be setting clear expectations, because not everything that pops on a quarry is created equal.
Right.
And there are some things that are going to be a hard pass. There are some things that you're gonna be like, oh, that happened, okay, but that's not a deterring factor for someone we don't want around our children. I mean, I, I.
I do this every day.
Right, right, but there's, there's no, there's nothing in here that says who's determining that, and who's, are they running the quarries, or does they get, do they get run through our HR department?
They get run through us, and we collect anything that is questionable comes to me.
Okay.
To determine yes or no in Methuen.
Is there any?
And it's not consistent, it's a little inconsistent between communities.
As, of course, why would, why would there be consistency?
Because each, I mean, each superintendent, I mean, I, right, they're like, what are my yes and nos versus Drakehead's yes and nos versus Andover's yes and nos? They are different.
Right, and I, I do think that we should have a, a queue of quarried folk for backfill. And I don't know how they would do that, I'm sure they have a.
I don't do that, they would have to do that.
Well, right, but if they say, listen, this is our pool of backfill folks, that if you have a call-out, we're gonna plug and play, Timmy's gonna drive this bus if we have to.
Right.
Those people should be giving to us ahead of time, so say, okay, we had a call-out, we pulled from the queue.
Right, so what they do, so let me just explain what happens. When I get a quarry and I see on the bottom of it that it says, Haverhill, Drakehead, Greater Lawrence, it means that if, if I say, they put those drivers on a list that says superintendent in Methuen, Drakehead, North Andover, Greater Lawrence, said yes, those people then can all be backup drivers. So they, they do a quarry and you see, it's very different when, when I'm reviewing the quarry for buses, I know it right away, because it absolutely will say on the bottom, it'll list about 20 different communities that they have to send these quarries to each superintendent, so they'll keep a list saying which schools go to that. The problem we ran into last year is that nobody had extra drivers, so all the ones that we've all said yes to in the communities around the Merrimack Valley, there weren't extra drivers. And they were, they did start pulling people from Lynn, making the assumption that because the Lynn superintendent said yes, I would say yes and it'd be fine, and that's not necessarily the case. That was really our concern last year, or in previous years, that they were pulling drivers from not our pool of Merrimack Valley drivers that we've all seen, right? That's where we got into some real strong disagreements with NRT in the past couple of years. So it is, it's an interesting way to do it, but it's exact, I mean, again, like I said, I, when those come to my desk and I have to approve and look through them, which I do every day, I look through quarries and things that come up on quarries and make those decisions on, was this person in college and did it happen, and it doesn't pertain to what's happening now in a classroom? I have to make those decisions every single day for every single employee that comes across, but when I see that group, I know it's automatically trumbly in NRT.
Is there anything compromised if I make a motion to table and it passes, if we push this to the next meeting?
I guess what I would just need to know is what exactly is it that I'm asking Attorney McNulty to look at? Because if it's something that you guys want that wasn't on the RFP, I don't think it's gonna be put on the contract. I know what you're saying, I think I know what you're saying, to make sure that any discussion we had about the performance is covered, and where would that be covered and how, or what do we have to add? I think that's what you're asking.
So.
Or specifically was about the penalty for quarries, are there any other levels of specific details that I need to share with him? Because NRT is expecting this, was expecting this.
So personally, I know I would have, time, time permitting, I would have redlined it and sent it back to Peter, because there, there are little things throughout that I would have tweaked. Is, is that an option?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe I collect feedback from the team and, over the course of the next week, I can provide you with a redline copy to send back to Peter?
You can't do that, because then it's deliberating.
Oh, open meeting, yeah.
I mean, you can just provide me some feedback, and if you capture what we've said here publicly, I, we can go back and forth and see if we can get one before September 24th.
Okay.
There, it is timely, because everybody's waiting for this contract for POs and service, they're not gonna put cameras on things until I have this contract done.
No pressure, all right.
Right now, it's okay.
Is, is there any way we could bring, who, who did this contract? I'm sorry.
Attorney McNulty.
Yeah, have him come in just to, maybe we had feedback, he could just come in and just hear our feedback and see if he can.
Yeah, but he's not gonna change it on the fly though.
No, no, but what he'll do is.
It's probably, it's probably more efficient and timely if we do some redlining and send it and see if it makes the most sense for the, I've heard two very specific things.
You want a motion to table it?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table from Member Shabilia, second is from Member DeZoglio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the contract's been tabled. Next, we're gonna move on to the point on the agenda where we're discussing the change of the superintendent's goal date. This has been requested by Member Shabilia. Do we have a motion to approve?
Is there, there's no motion yet.
It's on the agenda for approval, just so you know.
Oh.
No, I di, I didn't put the actual date that you wanted it changed, so I didn't, I should have put discussion.
So I guess I'll, I'll make the motion, so we can get the second, so we can have the conversation, then I can pass or fail.
Second.
Okay. Motion for Member Shabilia, the second is from the vice chair.
So, the reason I asked for this at the time was because our subcommittee, or our task force, or whatever it's called, for the audit, met, and we were planning the presentation to the leadership team, and then the joint presentation, which I believe will take place at MCS.
Great Hall.
Great Hall. Why? The audio on there is atrocious. I digress.
So, MCS has capacity concerns about their studio, and they recommended the Great Hall, and they're going to make that work for us?
Okay. Um, so, I wanted to ensure that Dr. Quong and the team were able to see this report prior to it being presented. Not for anything to be changed, but because I know if there were an audit done in my department at work, and it went out to the world before I was able to put eyes on it, I'd be livid. So, out of just professional courtesy, they should be able to see this and be prepared for what's going to come at a meeting. Those meetings were being discussed and scheduled, so what I wanted to do was align the goal setting to be the meeting after the audit was put forward. That way, we could actually have goals from the audit on the goal sheet. But then, she went and threw a curveball into my whole thing, so now I don't know what we do.
Yes.
Still do it? Still do it the same way?
Hundred percent.
I think it makes perfect sense to do that.
What? What? Change the date?
Change the date to do her goals the week the meeting after the audit is released in public.
So...
Publicized.
So...
We can vote to change it.
But, yeah. All right. So, I'm going with Chris, uh, I'm sorry, Member Maxwell. Unfortunately, when you, when you sign a contract, it's the contract. It's, unless, when we, when we approved her contract, well, when people voted to approve her contract, they should have put that in, that the audit should have been part of that contract. Unfortunately, I, no...
As someone who does contracts as, for a job, it should not have.
Wait a minute, but now you're changing the contract without...
Not changing the contract.
You are, based off the date. It says in her contract that it has to be October 1st. Correct?
Yes.
So, it's, we are changing the contract. So, I'm all about staying with contracts I, I sign, we've approved many contracts here before, and we've enforced them, so unfortunately, I'm, I'm going to say no on that, unfortunately, for that.
Member Maxwell?
I mean, I would just be, I would also just say no to that, because, you know, it is, again, it is in her contract. Also, I mean, there's a mid-year goal reviewal date in her contract as well. Every, anytime that, you know, I've brought up a concern with somebody else's contract, it's my, the answer that's given to me is, "Oh, no, it's contractual. We can't change that." And now, all of a sudden, we can? That doesn't, uh, so I, I'd be a no. That's...
Any other discussion?
Dr. Quong wants to say...
May I just say something, just to like, put that on the table? I think the important part for, for me is that we've been talking about this very publicly, about adding a goal to my goals, whatever may, may come out of the audit, right? And the timing right now is such that it, it doesn't match. I am incredibly, I think this is important. I think I need to go through the process of the goals as directed. I have no issue of either pushing back. I can present goals on the 24th that are strategy-based, knowing that we may add a goal to that before approval from the audit. I thi- I think there's just, there's some options here to do this, that I am, I'm right here. It's my contract. I have been saying it all along, that this is also, I know that this, this is incredibly important to the committee and the community. So, I think that not to go through this year, to have an audit, and then have people talk about that audit against my performance, and not have that as part of my goals, doesn't seem to make any sense whatsoever. So, I would, I would certainly say that I would be open, flexible, in favor of, you know, we do it in two parts, so that we can digest. I will have goals that are aligned to the strategy, that, I mean, this, I anticipate something that comes out of the audit, probably one additional district goal, that, that can't be my whole performance, and, and all five goals can't come out of a climate, you know, audit, because there's other things that we're working on, but we can do it in part, so I can present goals on the 24th for discussion, knowing that we add a goal or, or a discussion on that on the October 11th date.
Yeah. Does that make sense, what I would say procedurally, is if the, the committee, perhaps the folks who maybe motion, you could withdraw the motion, that would take it off the table, and then this would be, in essence, discussion? So, that's a procedural thought.
Aren't we having the discussion now?
But there's also a motion on the table to approve the date change. So, we would either need to have a vote regarding the date change, or...
Withdraw the motion, continue discussion. Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
And we're, the second's been withdrawn, so this is simply a matter of discussion at this point, from a procedural standpoint. Okay. Member Willett?
Is, is the audit finalized? So, why isn't it being released?
So, release is being coordinated by way of a joint special meeting between the City Council and School Committee.
Okay, so that's still about how many days away?
Two.
The public paid for that report.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not understanding, it's not state secrets, it's not classified. It's something that's going to be released anyways, in total. It, it's finalized, why isn't it being released?
So, the intent is to have a presentation to the superintendent for informational purposes, and then, following that, on Tuesday, the 30th, it's going to be released to both joint bodies together.
That's an arbitrary date for a presentation. We paid for that audit. We should have the audit released and its findings to the public.
And it will be.
Okay. But we're, we're talking about superintendent's goals, and why not have the audit released? Because we're going to have a meeting anyways, right? Have people digest it as a community. I know employees, teachers, parents, taxpayers have made numerous inquiries about this audit. Now, I, I know that the, the committee had to fine-tune it, and I know there was some concerns about the, some of the language was generalized, and the recommendations had to be strengthened. But ultimately, we've been waiting a long period of time for the, this audit, and I'm not seeing any reason why the audit shouldn't be released to the public, regardless of someone's contract, or goals, or when the, the joint meeting occurs, because that's just an arbitrary date. The audit is public anyways. There's no executive session issues, there's no confidentiality issues, there's no personnel issues.
I disagree.
Open meeting.
If I can clarify.
On an audit.
This is just a point of information. I'm sorry, Mr. Shabelia, I need to say this. I think you're wrong. I don't think the audit is done, if you...
That's what I was just going to clarify.
I have, I have, you know, we have documentation where I had asked for some additional information.
Okay.
And, um, to Kelly, one of our contacts. I'm sorry, do you have a question about that?
No.
Okay. Legitimate information, if you check your emails, I wanted to further break down some of the demographics. And she was away for a few days. So, it's, I know, that part is not done. I had asked for them to include some stuff about, like, if we had more information about the numbers of people from each school. So, I don't know if it's done.
Contradictory information.
Well, I just told you where it is, and I have documentation, if anyone would want to see that, okay? I mean, it was just some more information that she had asked, we had asked for, and I had specific questions about it.
And in terms of process, I'm...
It's not done. And almost, almost, jeez.
I'm following...
I did this when I said it was done.
Just a minute.
Oh, I didn't say that.
So, I'm following the same process that we utilized for the police department audit and the DPW audit, where we're just trying to have a coordinated public presentation. There's going to be an opportunity for the, both individuals who have been assisting us with the audit from C-Biz to engage in a presentation and a discussion. And I think it's vital for the audit to be rolled out in such a way that it is being done so by C-Biz and not by throwing it out there and having the, the conversation guided by anybody other than the auditors who have been putting this together. And so, I'm very protective of the process, so that we have it rolled out by C-Biz and not by me or by anybody else.
So, to, to Member Donovan, when will that inform, do we know when that information's going to be...
I, she asked for some clarification. I sent it back to her Sunday? Oh, that was yesterday. So, I'm assuming they were, could pull out some additional stuff.
So, for all intents and purposes, we have an outlined date for public release, for release to the City Council and School Committee, of Tuesday, September 30th. So, in keeping with the way that we've done these audits previously, that will be the date when it will be made available to the world, and a discussion will commence from there. And I'm sure we will have many meetings to develop a framework for the district in the future on that basis. Member Maxwell?
I just want to comment on the super, the goal conversation of, of putting the goals forward before, you know, October 1st and then editing. We, as a school committee, can edit and modify the goals and the indicators at any time, as long as it's both agreed upon. So, I'm, I, I don't, I just don't understand what the point would be on the goal date change, when we can amend it if needed. It's, it's in the contract as October 1st, I understand, but like, even if we got it done by October 1st, and then say, October 30th, this audit comes back, and, you know, we want to change something, we can do that. We still can do that. It doesn't have to be a date of change, so...
So, putting, putting information to Member Maxwell, because you seem more locked in on this contract, would technically be, and I'm just asking, technically, when we do September 24th, like, have those goals as she previous, and then we're technically going to edit it after the, the 1st, too? After the meeting? So, we're technically doing what the contract allows us to do, right?
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm saying that.
Oh.
I'm just saying that this is, this is a discussion on the superintendent's goal date change, not anything else. And I think that the goal date should remain the same, and if it needs to be edited, we can do that based on the audit. I don't know why the conversation has gone as far as it has. It's, it's a little off-topic. I mean, there's an update coming later on, when it comes to the audit. So, right now, we're talking about the goal date change, and the goal date change doesn't need to change, because we can view, and we can edit it and modify it at any time during the contract. So, it's a, it's a mute point.
So, can, so can we, but the way the process would be, would we be able to set up that edit time, like...
We can do it at any time.
Yeah, so technically, we could do it tonight, if we really wanted to, say, we're going to...
Because she doesn't have goals right now. Right now, she, she's going to submit them on September 24th, and that's it. I mean, I don't know, conversation's over.
I'm just saying, we could set another date for the editing.
We don't need to.
Do we have any other discussion? Member Shabelia, one more thing.
Yeah, the whole purpose of this was just to make sure we got the audit into the goals. I don't quite frankly care how we get it there, as long as we do.
We'll get it there. I'll present my goals on the 24th, and we'll add to it on the 11th as needed.
Great. And I will save my comments on the audit until we get to audit.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to Finance and Operations. We have the expenditure report and the revolving funds report. Any questions regarding either?
You do have the end of FY '25, and you have the first two months of FY '26, so I'm sure you're well aware. But if you have any questions, student activities accounts and food services will resume in October, with staff turnover, et cetera. We just didn't get those done, so those will be in October.
Member DeZoglio?
And, just to continue over Council, Pesh, it seemed like IceRink did very well. This...
Our goal with revolving accounts is to break even. So, whatever we bring in, we kind of want to spend, so, and we, we did that with the IceRink. So, off by a little bit, but pretty close to even.
Perfect.
I will say, I'm expecting the first payment for Circle Breaker for FY '26. Usually, it comes in a lot earlier than this, but we haven't seen it yet. That should be probably about $2.5 million roughly, so we'll be expecting that shortly.
Vice Chair?
Can you explain why the preschool tuition started at $148,000 for the year?
What money are you looking at?
Preschool tuition, 309-59.
FY '26 or '25?
Oh, '25, sorry.
That's what's left over from, oh, wait, from '25?
Yeah.
That's what was carried over from FY '24.
Twenty-four, okay, so we carry over, and that's why we start with a huge amount. I understand now. Thank you.
Yep.
One more thing, Mr. Ma.
Any other questions?
Yeah. The Marsh School PTO playground, that's been bothering me, what are we doing with that money?
I'm going to look to get some new nets and stuff for the, the backboards.
Perfect.
So, we'll get rid of that.
Thank you.
And I know they're also asking for some barrels. We could probably buy some barrels, so that we can keep it picked up out there.
Perfect.
All right.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the grants report. Any questions from the committee? Moving on to student activity accounts, this is going to be on the October 14th agenda. The food services report, as Mr. Goslin indicated, the reports for September and October will also be on the October 14th agenda. We're going to move on now to something new for our committee relative to warrant reports. So, we'll go right down, along with the agenda listing. We need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of July 14, 2025.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member DeZoglio. Discussion?
Can I just explain to the, the world why we're doing this? Because this is very new. So, in our conversations with the policy subcommittee, we had our field rep, Alicia Mallon, sort of quadrupled, checked this for us. So, the school committee needs to accept the warrants, but that does not mean that you approve or deny payment of the warrants. There needs to be a recognition of the warrants by the whole committee, whether or not you signed it. So, she suggested that we just start with this fiscal year, July, so, you know, we'll, on every monthly agenda, we'll have whatever was the previous month's warrants to be accepted, so we won't hopefully have, you know, you probably will have three or four. Every month, we do warrants typically on a weekly basis. So, that's the reasoning behind it, and she specifically gave me the language to do the, like, that's acceptance of the warrant. So, it's just an acknowledgement that you are accepting the warrant, and again, not, these obviously have already been signed and paid at this point. So, I hope that makes sense. It was a little, we had to go back and forth a little bit to check exactly what it was that we were supposed to do, and this is what she gave me last week to make sure it was on the agenda, and do one at a time.
And it makes a lot of sense as well, from a transparency standpoint. You know, prior to this, these warrants in electronic form were not readily available online, say, on the agenda, so now, at this point, anyone can go through the agenda and see for themselves the weekly warrant, which I think is helpful for transparency's sake. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of July 28, 2025.
So moved.
Motion from Member Shabelia, second from Member Donovan. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of July 31, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member DeZoglio, a second from the Vice Chair. Discussion?
I have one.
Yes.
So from the previous meetings about Pest End, when things, things that we, we sign on invoices and people said things were just getting tacked on or weren't being done, do we make sure that all these items that we are paying towards Pest End were completed?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't customarily pay for anything. We wait for it to be done before we pay them. Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of August 7, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabili, a second from Member DeZoglio. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of August 14, 2025.
So moved.
Motion for the Vice Chair, a second from Member Shabili. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of August 22, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member Shabili, the second is from Member DeZoglio. Discussion? Is there a discussion? We'll vote. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Lastly, we need a motion in a second to accept the warrant of August 28, 2025.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabili, a second from Member DeZoglio. Any discussion?
Real quick.
Yes.
I just want to quickly, I know that this is, this is new for us and like you said, and sorry, I couldn't get to the first round of discussion because I was trying to pull out all the, the cover sheets. I know this is something that we've gone around and around on as a committee since January 24. I just want to make sure that we, we understand that these, back in the day, Ian used to go and come and visit me three times a week. And he would pop up in the window in my office and I would sign his document. And pushing you guys to go to DocuSign, I'm putting down as my biggest victory in life thus far. So that, that was a big feat. But whether or not we sign these or vote on these, we're, we're all on the hook, right? So as a body, it's unanimous. So I just, there, there's, there's no appointed folks. I know we had that conversation with Alicia. Nobody is appointed to assign or sign off on these. So I just want to let people know that like, as these come up, it's, it's pretty consistently been the same folks doing it, unless there was kind of a call to arms, which I know there was on the last go around. So like, people, we can, we could speed this up by people being able to jump on them and move them along faster than some of us may get to it. So hopefully that will encourage folks to click the button and that way it helps things get done quicker for you. Not that it's not quicker than you putting around town, but.
Just to point out briefly, so on this documents that are on the links here, I know on at least one of them.
I was going to say the same thing.
The CAFO and I, we sign off on them weekly, but we do it with our pen rather than DocuSign and then it's scanned back, I believe.
It's sent to the treasurer at that point.
Yeah. Yep. So even though I'm not on there on the DocuSign, we do actually physically.
I use the old school.
Well, I, I get it placed on my desk to review and then I sign off on it and I get the opportunity to be old school, I guess. So just to mention that. Any other? And, no? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we're on to Contract Awards. We have none. Lastly, actually not lastly, next on the agenda, we have notifications of appointments and other personnel matters. We have the Director of Facilities job title change. We need a motion in a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion from the Vice Chair, a second from Member Shabili. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to start this. So what you see here tonight is a result of a lot of conversation between myself, Mr. Goslin, Ms. McCarthy, Mr. Stella, just trying to think of a better way. We, we presented a restructuring of the department during the budget cycle that had more staff in it. So we're, we didn't get all those staff. So we're trying to think of a way. Mr. Stella will be retiring in December. We have a new position in the budget, one of the main, new maintenance positions that you all did approve. But what we had in mind for that last April is very different than I think what we need on the ground right now. And so we are presenting this tonight, hopefully for approval so we can move forward with these two ideas, that we would actually have two positions that would be of equal nature district-wide, that would be supervised by the direct, the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, that these two would be working together, but have very different roles in the system to make the system run. And so I know I'm not going to jump too far ahead, but they're very formatted similarly and hopefully you can read through that. Salaries are very similar. You know, both of these are expected to have very flexible schedules. They will be called at wee hours to do various things. But we do see a very distinct difference between what we need with our building and facilities and what we need with our cleaning and supervision of custodial staff. And so we're presenting these tonight in hopes that you will approve. The job title changes is more of what is in your purview, so that is why it's on the agenda that way. But important that we provide these two job descriptions because you could see, they're so vastly different than what have, has existed, that we wanted you to understand what our thought process was in dividing this, to be able to actually supervise these two areas in a little bit of a different, maybe creative way than we have ever done in the district and not having one supervise the other. So having, having had that system in place for a year and a half, it was challenging to actually separate the two out, you know, the facilities, who does what? So we're presenting this to you tonight in hopes that you will say yes. Our hope is that we would move forward with the second one that we'll discuss after this because that is a position that is just currently open and we'd like to get this posted ASAP. The Building Maintenance and Facility Supervisor, we would like to get it posted, but the start date would be reflected as, for Mr. Stella's retirement date. Or close to it, so there's some overlap and knowledge that we, he needs to share with the, the next person, which is coming up quickly.
Discussion? Member Willett?
A quick concern about the minimum qualifications. It doesn't make any reference to education. And I looked quickly at Situit and their Director of Facilities and does involve a degree, necessarily a engineering degree or industrial science degree or even an associate's degree. There's no degree that's associated with this position. And I, I think we need to be careful of who we're hiring. And I think we should look in other communities and at least the bare minimum in terms of education. And I'm not talking about an English major or a philosophy major. It's just someone that would have maybe an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree that would match obviously the experience of a large-scale organization too, but there's nothing there in terms of minimum education. That's something I'm just concerned about.
I'm going to counter that. I saw, you saw that one coming, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would argue that the qualification, the five-year work experience in, in organization of similar size or industrial or commercial organization of relevant experience, some of the best hires I've made in a highly regulated global organization have been high school graduates, not associates or bachelors or masters or JDs or any other thing. I think that we need to be hiring for skills. A lot of these folks went through trade schools. They didn't go to college. They're not going to have master's degrees. What I would like to see potentially added to a qualification is some kind of licensure.
We hemmed and hawed about the, well, we hemmed and hawed about all this as we were writing this and we did get some samples from other districts. Situit wasn't one of them, but about a certificate. Because what certificate and what is that back?
Well, that was going to be my next thing. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's, you know, plumber, electrician, HVAC. I mean, are we, we felt that we would be really backing ourselves into a hole of potential people to be able to do this work and also supervise and lead, you know, like the communication and things like that. So, I mean, we, we did hem and ha about certification or education for that reason.
But then you also back yourself into a corner where if you're putting it out, then you're saying you want a, a master plumber or a master HVAC guy or whatever it may be. Now your cap of 95?
It's too low. I know.
And then you're stuck. So, I mean, I have faith in HR that that'll be weighted in interviews. But as for a college qualification, I mean, we, we put, I don't want to say we put too much of an emphasis on it, but these, these are trades folk, people. That's what they do. My college degree does not qualify me for either one of these jobs. So, thank you.
I would tend to agree. I've met a lot of well-educated idiots in my life. Member DeZoglio?
To back off of that, yeah, my, my mother's been in HR for 35 years and my brother has a bachelor's in HR and communications and my mom runs circles around him all day when it comes to HR stuff. So when it comes to college degrees, I, I understand from everybody, trades, this is a tradesman's job. But I also don't, I, I, I like the licensure, but I like the price right now to, to do that. So sometimes that bachelor degree where we, we could stop them at that price where master tradesman might not want that price as well. So I feel like we're in a, I hear both sides. I, I agree with Member Shabili, this, this is a tradesman's job. But I also agree with Member Willett is sometimes you pull that kid out of the bachelor's degree that doesn't have the experience, we can have him at that price at some degree. I feel like both sides, we have, we have, I, I see both sides of this. So, thank you.
Member Maxwell?
So I, I guess when it comes to licensure, I would say, I would either suggest taking it out of the qualifications or coming up with which licensure that is. So I know in, like in construction, it says, you know, it says, understand, interpret, and apply building codes, laws, rules, and regulations. In construction and residential, you get a CSL, a CSL or an HIC and that's your licensure. But, so if you're, if you're saying that that's a qualification, understanding, interpreting, and applying building codes, laws, rules, and regulations, that is a license. So we need to, before we approve this, we need to decide whether we want that as a qualification or just knowledge of. And then we could kind of eliminate the actual license. I'm not sure. But if we're saying that they do in fact have these qualifications, that does come with a license. So we need to, I don't know, I would say before we approve this, we need to figure out what license that is. What is this?
So I would be in favor of changing it to knowledge of.
Yeah.
Because, and I'm totally fine with that and understand that, I, I, I think we're, again, we're trying to think outside the box. And right now, we have licensed people doing things and they end up doing the work, which is what I'm hearing loud and clear, right? I have somebody who has a certificate and an enormous amount of experience, who's actually in boilers and in ducts and doing the work, which is not quite what we're hoping for, right? We want somebody who can manage, lead, figure out what those projects are, man, get it done. What's the PO? What's the RFP process? Right? We want somebody who can do that and understand it. I know you have to vote because it's nine o'clock.
We need a motion in a second to extend the meeting past nine o'clock?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
So I think if we do a knowledge of for the maintenance, it makes the most sense. So I'd be in favor of that, not to lock ourselves into or back ourselves into a particular certificate of which we're not going to be able to afford. Because there is absolute truth to that. I think so many years ago, we were trying to find electricians and plumbers. We can't replace people with, with those trades anymore with the amount we pay them in a public school. It's very challenging. So are we looking for somebody who has the supervision and management? Yes, we are. Right? That's somebody who knows what are any employee of us, what is their capacity and then what is not within their capacity, right? And when to call for the contracted service that we need for the roof, for the HVAC, for that. That is, I think, what we need. I'm, I'm saying that to you because I know we need that because we're the ones doing it. So I think I'm all in favor of doing whatever you guys do if you would approve this with a, with a, you know, understanding that we would post it that says knowledge of. Makes perfect sense to me on both sets.
Vice Chair?
The only thing I wanted to add for essential duties and responsibilities is some sort of building-by-building book of what needs to be done in each building so that we know, like, you know, this, this building has boiler X, you know, like that sort of stuff so that if that person leaves or whatever, there's a book that they can say, okay, instead of having the jack-of-all-trades who happens to be in every boiler in every place, we, we need some way of documenting what people are doing in each building so we know what's there.
Second that.
Wait, with, oh, nevermind.
Sure.
Does that need to be listed in duties? Is that what you're saying, Lori?
Maintain, create and maintain.
Yes. You know what I'm saying? Yes.
I thought it was two, but create and maintain. No, I think it's, I, I know what Lori's asking and I don't disagree. We can add something.
Like kind of like a building handbook, kind of.
Yeah. Yep.
Do we have any other discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We need a motion in a second to accept a newly approved maintenance position job title change.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member DeZoglio, a second from Member Shabili. Discussion? If not, we'll vote. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we need a motion in a second to accept the Assistant Systems Administrator title change to District Technology Support Specialist.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabili, a second from the Vice Chair. Discussion?
Okay. So this one doesn't have like a sheet attached to it because there's not, this isn't like a massive change in what we're doing. So we currently have an Assistant Systems Admin. That person resigned. You know, Nancy and her team have been really working three-man less than what we should have all summer. So we're trying to onboard some new folks. But they, the team sees very clearly that they would prefer to have a district tech support person that we have in the buildings, actually another one of those stationed at the tenny full-time, instead of replacing the Assistant Systems Administrator. It just makes sense to have a building tech in each building and have the Director of Technology, the Network Operator, and the Operations Manager and Data Specialist. And it's actually less money. It's, it's less money than what was in the budget, what we would pay for. The district tech support would be equal with what we're paying the others.
Member Maxwell?
I'm just, I'm just confused. Can you?
Try to sum that up better.
Yeah, so is it per, every building will have their own?
So, so high school, tenny, and what we're, what, if you guys approve this tonight, this switch, high school, tenny, and timony would have their own building tech support person. And then there's a gentleman who goes in between the Marsh and CGS that has a very good system. So right now, we're just looking, because this is already in the budget, we're just looking to flip the title of that person to be a support specialist and have them be grounded at the tenny. I don't say grounded. I meant, you know, like stationed at the tenny.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Lastly, we're on to other business from the committee. We have the audit update from Member Shabili.
So bringing us back, Member Willett, you may have recalled when you asked if the audit was done and the mayor said, yes, I gave you one of these. So is the audit done in a substantial fashion? Just, just about? There are some clarification issues. I know Member Donovan had asked for one over the weekend. There are also some cleanup things that are going on. For example, there are individuals. There are also some cleanup things that are going on. For example, there are individuals named in the document. And I had this conversation with the mayor, and putting that out there is going to expose us to lawsuits. So we need to work with council to make sure that we are not changing the document, but obscuring the individual names in an appropriate manner. Maybe, for example, it's administrator, or teacher, or whatever it needs to be. You know what I mean? That way Dr. Quong gets to know who is named, and manage it in a way in which staffing issues are handled. But it's not, we're not putting out individuals' information and openly discussing frontline workers in a meeting, because that would be bad for us. I think from a substantial nature, it is, once those issues, I think, are wrapped up, I think we're there, because we're planning our launch party. Like, it's go. It's go time, and I would have loved to have had this thing out in July, but unfortunately, it didn't go that way. But I have no regrets, because we pushed the auditors to do more with the data they had, because I think the data is good. The data tells a positive story, and they're going to rerun that survey at the end of the school year. So we'll get a second set of data points, so we can benchmark them. So when we're talking goaling and reviewing, we'll actually have hard data that they'll run for us, and tell us, for free, yes, free, it's for me, and we'll be able to know what it is. And I think, to the mayor's point, having CBiz be the one to drive this, you've been involved in Methuen politics a long time, so you more than anybody know that there is a general disdain for everything we stand for as a collective city, or elected officials, or politics, just because people don't like politics. They don't like politicians. Having CBiz present this as, you know, their work, their findings, it removes all the bias. It removes all the nonsense, and it presents it from a factual standpoint. They'll be able to tell you how they arrived at these findings, how they arrived at this data, what the nucleus was for that, and the nexus for this, and all those things that you're not going to really get from just a reading. They're going to be able to do that, and then you'll be able to pepper them with questions, which will be fun. So, go ahead.
The only problem I have with it is that I'm getting two pitches. One is, it's going to be a very positive report. So, okay, let's dispel that. It's not, it's going to be a good and bad report.
May I?
The way you said it right now is kind of like a rosy, above-expected report. And so I'm not, and, you know, that was the one aspect of it. The other aspect was, I was hearing repeatedly that we're doing just minor tweaking, and that this report is ready, and now I've had two members from the Audit Committee said, "No, we still got to do some major tweaking, and we have to get the..."
Nothing here is major.
It has to be vetted through council, right?
Not vetted. We need to understand how to not get ourselves sued. But it's how do we identify specifically called-out individuals that have presented in a pattern that the auditors have identified without identifying them? You know what I mean? Because we can't do that. You know as well as I do, because we're going to catch a lawsuit, and I'd really like to not cost the city more money.
The thing about it is that, I'm on the periphery. So when I'm on the periphery, right, and we had, again, I make reference to the evaluation, right, is that there was notable concerns that are going to be presented in the audit. Now, are there still notable concerns that are going to be presented in the audit, because you guys are privy to the audit?
So the audit...
If not, then are we retracting that? Because that's a document that this was approved by this body.
So the content of the audit, as produced by the auditors, based on the data collected by the auditors, it is what it is, and it's going to be presented as it is. I think the concern is that the city, now this is the thing, the city has paid for the audit, and ultimately, it's under the direction of me in terms of stewardship of the process. And that's why I've been so protective of the process, because I want to maintain the integrity of the process, the integrity of the finished product. And so in referencing the completeness of the report, they put together, from super nuts, a document. So the production of the document is fundamentally complete. The thing that we're talking about here is ensuring that we are minimizing any prospective liability to the city, for instance. We want to ensure that as part of, you know, the last-minute adjustments to ensure that the finished product is ultimately what we're paying $140,000 for. We want to just make sure that it is satisfying all of the city's needs from a liability standpoint, et cetera. But ultimately, their findings are their findings, and that it will all be included in the audit. But at the same time, we're trying to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, there is significant liability concerns. There's also, from my standpoint, and this is something that I picked up on from the PD audit, we want to maintain the strictest confidentiality when it comes to the individuals who came forward to share information and insights. And so all of that is playing into this. So I just want to be as cautious as possible to ensure that on the 30th, the final report that is released to the public, of course, it will reflect the findings of the auditors, but it'll be presented in such a way that preserves confidentiality, but also ensures that we're covered from a liability standpoint. And so that's where we're at in terms of the process. I didn't mean to take away, but I just wanted to state that.
So when you mean by confidential, meaning employees of Methuen Public Schools were named in the report, and we're trying to take those out because, right, is that, no. Okay, so explain. I just wanted to explain the confidential. Are we talking about Methuen employees, or are we talking about the ones that gave, did the...
I'm going to state this, for the record, and this is what I'm able to share from a security standpoint, so to speak, in terms of confidentiality. So when I reached out to employees of the Methuen Public Schools to invite them to participate in interviews, for instance, I promised that their identities would remain confidential, in order to ensure that people were comfortable coming forward to share their insights and perspective, and do so in a free way, so that the auditors could acquire that information and incorporate that. And so along those lines, the goal here is, when it comes to the actual report, you'll see eventually, when it is formally public, there are sections that include comments that were derived from interviews, from surveys, et cetera. We want to ensure that CBiz is making that bulletproof by way of preserving the confidentiality of the people who contributed that information. And so the data, it's, the data's based on, well, numbers data that we collected as part of the surveys and responses and the like, and I'll let the auditors get into that. But ultimately, the goal is to ensure that the finished product, when it is presented publicly, is done so in a way that preserves that confidentiality, so that I'm able to keep my word to the people who came forward. Yeah. Mayor Maxwell?
I think that I was worried that the confidentiality thing, I knew that the confidentiality protected the people that were making the reports. I, from what I understood from just now, I thought that we were going to have the people's names redacted if the report was, I don't want to say about them, but if it included them, and there was a negative or positive impact, is that person also confidential?
Confidential is not the word, but yes. So let's use Member DeZoglio, since he's a teacher. If this was done in his district, and there was a survey done, and out of 800 responses, 600 people said, "Mr. DeZoglio is the worst ever," and that made its way into the report, you can't, as the school committee in his district, sit in an open session and, you can't, yeah, you can't do that, because you're going to get sued. We would be exposing the city to more liability, and not only do we not have the money now, we definitely won't have the money after we get sued.
So how are we going to fix issues if their names or the positions that the report is about is redacted?
Those issues need to go to the superintendent and to HR.
And if they are about? If they are about HR or the superintendent?
Then it comes to us as a body.
But it's redacted, so how are we going to know?
We can get all of that in executive session, because then it's a staffing conversation. But right now, we can't sit here and talk about Mr. DeZoglio, the teacher.
Right. I just wanted to understand where you were coming from that. So if needed, the school committee does, could, or does have access to the redacted names, but if, okay.
If we had to, and the committee deems it necessary, and Mr. Mayor, if I'm straying, push me back in my lane, but if, after reviewing this, we say we need to have an executive session with CBiz to discuss what we believe is issues that were censored, or not censored, redacted for the community, but would pertain to this body.
Sure, okay.
As long as we can cite one of those applicable rules to executive second-session exceptions, we could do that. Yeah, no, I mean, this thing has to be done in the right way, otherwise it loses all of its integrity. And I would like to not get sued.
Yeah, no, I was just confused on that process, but thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
I do. I just have one statement. I just want to say that I was a little bit disappointed in the process where this body found out about the date of the audit in the Eagle Tribune, and that this body should have been told and informed of when that meeting was scheduled, when the City Council was told, because the City Council knew, and it got published in the Tribune, and this body has yet to get an email saying when that meeting is. And so I'm a little bit disappointed that this body has been shown a lot of disrespect in that aspect, because we should have been in the knowledge of when this meeting was being scheduled, and not finding out from Teddy.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on to the busing update from Member Shabelia.
That was covered during our busing contract.
Okay. Any other business from the committee? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabelia, the second is from the Vice Chair. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Actually, you know what? We'll take a roll call on adjournment.
Why are we roll calling adjournments?
I believe we're supposed to, and I don't think we have been doing that.
Oh, that's interesting.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Borgha?
Yes.
Thank you.
The time is 9:17, and we are adjourned.
Good night, Methuen.